A little fun with him earlier.
Yeah, I don't know if I can get this bunch corralled or not. So I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order at 6:01 PM. This is a regular meeting for Tuesday, April 1st, 2025. Madam Clerk, will you? Okay, I'm going to call the meeting to order.
Thank you.
Thank you, and Madam Clerk, will you please take the role?
I will. Tim Hale.
Here.
Stephanie Nowers.
Here.
Dee McKee.
Here.
Maxwell Sumner.
Here.
Bill Gamble.
Here.
Dimitri Fonoff.
Here.
Ron Bernier.
Present.
Madam Mayor, you do have a quorum.
Thank you. Is there anything that the members would like to poll from the consent agenda? Okay, we'll wait. Okay, anything else? Yes.
Okay, poll AM 25-032.
You have that one also. Okay, anything else?
And AM 25-033. 033.
And that was an AM also, sir. Okay. Anything else? Okay, are there any other changes to the agenda? Okay, see none, then the agenda is approved as presented. And you have your ribbon still on there, sir?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're going to see how much the attorney has learned in 20 years of being at the borough. Enjoy the applause, there's no check involved.
I think it's the first time anybody ever clapped for an attorney.
Yes, right. You get a penny for every clap or something like that. Will you please lead us in the pledge?
Let's lead us to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, invincible with liberty and justice for all.
And honestly, folks, I don't think that's an April Fool's joke. I'm not sure we have anybody here this evening to receive this National Second Chance Proclamation. I know they had their reentry conference today at the Menard Center, where many of the people that were honoring tonight were there and gave their testimony. And it was presented to them also at that time, but I'll read it now so I can read it into the record, so. So whereas the Matsu Borough acknowledges the importance of redemption and the opportunity for individuals to rebuild their lives after incarceration. And each year, thousands of individuals are released from prisons across the United States, facing significant barriers to integration, including challenges to securing employment, housing, education, and healthcare. Where these barriers contribute to a higher cost of repeat crimes affecting public safety and the well-being of our communities. And whereas national, this is a national recognition. Second Chance Month is observed mainly in April to raise awareness about the obstacles faced by many of these people. Whereas this observance aligns with our borough's values of compassion and the belief in second chances. Now therefore, I, Edna De Vries, Mayor of the Matsu Borough, do hereby proclaim National Second Chance as April 2025. And I wasn't in that situation, but I know in my own personal life, there's been many, many times, many people have given me second chances. And so I think we've all, at some time or another, have faced that situation, so. Then the next proclamation is not on the agenda, but I want to. So this proclamation is to all of you and to all of the people that come and testify, either online or in person. And as you know, many times our meetings have to be extended because we have a mandatory 10 o'clock adjournment, but then we have to push it and we have to have a motion to extend it, on and on and on. And our time is valuable, and I know your time is valuable. So in order to move the meeting faster, what we're going to do is, instead of giving the audience participation three minutes, we're going to cut that down to a minute. And so now, and as you know, we have two audience participations, as well as time for a public hearing. So all of those will be changed to one minute instead of three. And then the next part of this proclamation is to the Assembly. Because sometimes on the Assembly, many of you will talk four and five times on one particular issue, and it takes a long time for all of that to happen. And so from now on, you are only going to get to speak once on each AM, each ordinance, or any kind of action that we do. And next time when you come, your chairs are going to turn around. And when audience participation starts, your chairs are going, your backs are going to be to the audience. And then if you like what they say, then you can turn your chair around. And if three of you agree with the audience, then the audience will get another minute. Okay? So be prepared, there's going to be some transition going on here. And if you haven't guessed it by now, April Fool's Day! I like the idea of the chairs, you know, don't you? Anyway, thanks to my assistant Tiffany and I, we spent some time on that. We had another, some other ones too, but we had the one about the roundabout, where if you get stuck in a roundabout and you go back around, an arm would come out and give you a Snickers bar. So then you would feel better about going back around the roundabout. Anyway, so now to serious business. Or maybe this is probably maybe the most serious business we could get tonight. The next item on our agenda is minutes from preceding meetings. And we have minutes from February 18th, 2025. Our strategic planning minutes on the 1st of March, 2025. Assembly regular meeting minutes on the 4th of March of 2025. And the Joint Assembly and Planning Commission meeting on the 11th of March of 2025. Are there any changes to any of these minutes? Okay, then they have been approved as presented. The next item we have is agency reports. Do we have anybody from the cities? Okay, I don't see anybody. And we don't have anybody from the school district. They probably don't have too much more to say to us since they spent several millions of dollars last time we met. Probably don't want to hear from them again for a while. I don't see Todd either for the state of Alaska. And I understand there was no committee on the Joint Assembly and School Board. Under Public Relations, for everybody that can see, there's a map on this wall over here. I was recently in a meeting with Representative Begich, and he had received a request from the Secretary of the Interior for us to identify all of the federal lands that are in our borough. And so GIS at the borough made that map up, and now it has electronically been sent to Representative Begich's area. And since that request, I've seen on the news where the Department of Interior and HUD are looking at all of the federal lands throughout the United States to build affordable housing. And we don't, it doesn't look like we have very much opportunity there, but maybe some of the state lands, we can work something because we around this table have discussed affordable housing in many details. So that's what that map is over there for. Okay, Mr. Brown, do you have?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to invite Tom Adams forward. We just wanted to give you a short update on the Safe Streets for All. So Ordinance 25052 is on our introductions for tonight, so we just didn't want that to slide by. We wanted to call attention to it, give you a quick highlight or some updates on it, and then solicit any questions or comments over the next couple of weeks so that we might be better prepared for the public hearing. And Tom, I bought you all the time, the floor is yours.
I'm sorry, let's listen to the.
See? I delayed as long as I could. So Tom's going to give you a quick update. We call it, we called it, or originally it was known as the Safe Streets for All. Now we call it the Comprehensive Safety Action Plan. Interchangeable at this point, same grant opportunity, same, same work involved in there. So Tom's going to give you a quick overview on that. And again, set it up so that if you have questions or concerns, or even amendments, or things like that, that you want to discuss over the next couple of weeks, it'll put us in a better position to have that public hearing in a couple of weeks.
I'm done. Mayor, Manager, Member Assembly, my name's Tom Adams, Public Works Director. The manager effectively set this up for what I hope to be a very brief update where we're at. I'll make a correction, it is still Safe Streets for All. It is the program under the USDOT. It's federally funded. As you mentioned, tonight you'll see on the agenda an introduction for the April 15th meeting for public hearing. So we really wanted to make sure that we highlighted the fact that this Safety Action Plan is coming before you for approval. You know, and honestly, what I'd like for you to do and encourage you to do is review the plan. And if you have questions, you know, reach out to me, my staff, you know, in the interim base between now and the public hearing, so we can really have an opportunity to answer any kind of inquiries you might have and not necessarily be burdened with, you know, an hour-plus interaction on the evening of the public hearing. So that's really what we're here for. I'll just start real quick, in 2022, the MSB was awarded a grant, this was like a $650,000 grant, so a pretty substantial grant, from the US Department of Transportation, Safe Streets for All Program to develop a comprehensive safety action plan. The Safety Action Plan is a strategic roadmap to help the MSB move towards a safer transportation network to significantly reduce serious injuries and fatalities on the roadway. You know, within the project study area, and you're going to get, I tried not to use this word because it confuses a lot of people, you know, we call it the Expanded Core Area, and there's some nuances to that. Within the project's Expanded Core Area, more than 10,000 roadway crashes occurred between 2013 and 2022. These included 99 fatal crashes, 345 serious injury crashes, and 69 crashes involving bicycles and pedestrians, 93% of which resulted in injury or death. Every year, 43 borough residents are seriously injured or killed on the transportation network of the Expanded Core Area. The ripple effects of these serious crashes go far beyond the lives of the people involved. They reverberate through families, friends, neighborhoods, and the whole community. The vision for creating a safer transportation network in the MSB stems from the knowledge that all crashes are preventable. By making changes to key elements of the transportation system, we can anticipate human mistakes and create layers of protection within network that reduce fatalities and serious injuries. Now, you'll find most of that text in the plan. I mean, I really just took it out of there, but it really highlights what this plan is about. It's about evaluating where across our Expanded Core Area, where our problem areas are, where our safety areas might be, and tries to evaluate what we might be better able to do in our transportation network to move towards a Vision Zero. You know, effectively bring that number down closer to, you know, something more acceptable. You know, we had a cool little video that we were prepared to make that showed, you know, when you say somebody, you know, in the past year, 43 borough residents seriously injured and killed. You know, what should that number look like? You know, and without belaboring the conversation, a lot of people come back with something less than that. Well, like 10. Well, when you, when you think about that, if 10 were seven, you and three folks out here, would that number still be 10? I mean, so the number really that we want to have, as far as crashes or serious injuries, the answer should be zero in all cases. How we get there is what this Comprehensive Safety Action Plan really tries to break down. So we put together a couple of slides because there's a lot of things that have been misunderstood about what this document is and what it is not. So I'm just going to, you know, put this up here. You should each have the handouts as well. So what the Safety Plan does, well, it provides a background on the Safe System Approach. And the Safe System Approach is a core tenet of the National Roadway Safety Strategy that significantly reduces serious injuries on our nation's highways, roads, and streets. And the document explains what that Safe System Approach includes. It analyzes crash history and trends, sets goals to reduce serious and fatal injury crashes on the road, and recommends a list of policies and practices that MSB, the cities, and MSB can choose. And we highlight that word "choose" because, as you'll see on the next page, this document does not force us to do anything. It is an opportunity to implement recommended mitigation matters. It provides a toolkit of proven safety countermeasures that agencies can use in developing new road projects. It recommends projects that can help improve safety at select areas and serves as a tool to fund projects and planning activities, either within the SS4A grants or otherwise. I'll point out that we just got notice today of the funding opportunity for the next round of the SS4A program. The application deadline will be the end of June. It does require for us to move on and be eligible for the next round of funding that we have an adopted plan. That's what this plan is here. We could receive up to $25 million for implementation grants. And overall, the SS4A program is nearly a billion dollars of federal funding that's not only for this next fiscal, federal fiscal year '25, but also anticipated similar funding for next year. So you can see there's quite a significant opportunity to obtain some funding to address some of our shortfalls in our transportation network. Just as importantly is what the Safety Plan does not do. It does not serve as a directive or mandate to implement any of the recommended policies, practices, or projects. It does not change the boundary of the Matsu Core Area. We recognize, in hindsight, we probably should have chosen a better word to describe our project area other than a Expanded Core Area because some folks thought we were literally expanding the core area. That's not what we're intending to do. It's just the way we described. We took the core area and found some boundaries to that that were just beyond. That made sense for this, for this study, so we're not changing the boundary with this document. Does not favor one mode of transportation over another. The goal is to improve safety for all users, all modes of transportation. There's been initially some apprehension that this was all pedestrian or anti ATV, and it's just not the case. It does not limit or recommend limitations to allowing ATV use where they are legally permitted to operate. Does not direct agencies to use any of the countermeasures in the toolkit. And it does not set goals related to reducing carbon emissions or combating climate change. I think it's important when you look at this to see, you know, what the document is intended to do versus what it's not intended to do as you start your review of this document. I can tell you that we had a very extensive public involvement process in the preparation, analysis, and ultimately the development of this action plan. We received 912 responses to a survey that was put out there. We also had over 800 hits on the virtual public workshop. We had over 16 meetings with various MSB agency groups, you know, starting from, you know, the Local Road Service Area Advisory Board, the Transportation Advisory Board, various community councils, the Transportation Advisory Board, which I think I already mentioned, the Planning Commission. I mean, we had 16 different meetings with various different groups. We did recently receive a resolution to support our TAB, and we are anticipating to get the written document, if we haven't already, from the big board, the Local Road Service Advisory Board. So we have support from effectively those transportation groups that serve the borough. The draft document that you'll see presented to you is effectively a draft, but it includes the 74 public comments that we received. includes the 74 public comments that we received that will ultimately be considered and, in the final document. And so you'll see that, you know, there, there are certain comments with respect to ATV spacing or accommodations for ATVs within our rights of way and our transportation network, and recommendations at Shaw Elementary, which most of you are probably already aware, we have a significant project to, to address that. I guess I should probably delete this too. What's that? Thank you. You always got my back, Lonnie. Appreciate you. Plan highlights, you know, it, I think, you know, I've said this before, when you take engineering data and, and put it in a study, it can be very dreary and slow and, you know, most time you can't make it through a document this large without setting it down half a dozen times because it just puts you to sleep. But on the other, on the flip side, I think this document is very well-written. It presents a lot of good data and a, in a very interesting way that makes you want to flip pages every time because it just draws you in. So, you know, this is, this, this sheet up here that you see in the slide here, you know, our crash analysis, safety survey results, you know, policy practice, performance target recommendations, and then ultimately project recommendations, all are included in the Safety Action Plan. And then just cap it off, you know, what are we looking for? You know, again, I'll go back to what I said earlier tonight. I, I really encourage you to take time to look at this plan. If you have questions, and I expect that you will, I hope that you'll take the next couple of weeks to, to reach out to me and or my staff, have those conversations so that when you get back to actually considering the adoption of this plan, you will be, you have been satisfied one way or another. You know, ultimately, this whole body will have to take action on this, but I will encourage you to take a peek at that. You know, we do have to have an adopted plan in order to be eligible for the next round of funding. And I can tell you that when we have an opportunity to, to pursue $25 million of a nearly $1 billion program, you know, our, our opportunities, our chances for gating that $25 million are fairly high. So first step is adopt the plan. That being said, that's why I have mayor.
Thank you. Questions, comments from the Assembly?
Just one really brief one about lighting. When I was looking at the things that the people were concerned about, you know, we need to do this, 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 and this, I didn't see lighting in there. I saw it on one of the other things, but one that was talked about with the public was most concerned. Is there not a lot of concern about lighting on the streets? Because I'm telling you, that can be so hazardous here.
Through the mayor, certainly as I remember McKee, lighting can play a large part in safety. You know, what came out of this study though, didn't necessarily rely on the absence of lighting as far as the, the causes for crashes or serious injuries, and perhaps didn't, didn't rise to one of the, the proven countermeasures to, to offset some of those safety concerns.
I'm hoping. Thank you.
Your name is Deputy Mayor? No? Okay. Nobody down there? Okay, I guess so. Thank you, sir. Anything else in your report, sir?
That's all, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Attorney, do you have a report, sir?
I don't have anything particular to report other than to let the Assembly know, I do have a little bit of travel coming up for some work matters and then family matters. I do have three graduations in May. I have an eight, I have a first of high school, then a college, then an eighth grade, all within a week. So I'm going to be here and then traveling on a state and then back. I'm going to be sending you all an email, letting you know the dates I'm going to be gone, and either Mr. Ashenbrenner or Ms. Baudelaire will be covering the meeting. So just, just FYI, I won't be here. And then just thanks to everybody for letting Mike and I engage in our little juvenile shenanigans about work stuff. You know, if we were in high school together, we probably would have been a problem. Thankfully, we're more mature than that right now, but thanks for letting us have a little bit of fun with things. It really, it really makes it good for work, good work environment. I appreciate it.
Well, on behalf of all of us, we appreciate your dedication and your, your openness and your availability to all of us. And so, thank you very much. Anybody else want to comment? Okay, Madam Clerk, report?
The clerk's report is in your red folder, has upcoming meeting schedule, plus the quasi-judicial report, and also at the, excuse me, also what's attached is next Wednesday's agenda for April 9th, departmental budget presentations. And at the last assembly meeting, the Assembly had asked for a joint meeting with the Water Body Setback Advisory Board. I would like to recommend April 29th at 3 P, 3 P M, right before the last budget public hearing, so it would be here in chambers.
Okay, questions, comments on that date?
April 29th. Second page, it would be a new meeting that gets added for a joint meeting with the Water Body Setback Advisory Board. At 3:00, I figured you guys, the Assembly would want more time.
Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry, Assembly person, Assembly, go ahead.
My only comment would be, we hopefully don't need three hours for that. I would like to push that closer to 6:00.
Many, how much? An hour, two hours?
My recommendation would be one hour.
Two hours. I see a two-hour down here, two, one hour there. Let's, let the bidding start here.
So we can have a break in between if we started at 4:00 like we do the other ones, I think.
We could do 4:00.
Then we can finish like 5:15, 5:30 if needed, take a break or have dinner or whatever.
Is there any objection to 4:00? Are you okay with that? You are? Okay.
And then also, we do have the annual evaluations of the Manager, Attorney, and Clerk coming up, so I've got some dates here to present to you. It'd be May 20th before the regular meeting at 4:00 for the Manager, June 3rd before the regular meeting at 4:00 for the Attorney, and June 17th at 4:00 before the regular meeting for the Clerk.
Any concerns there, or are everybody okay with them?
It would be May 20th, June 3rd, and June 17th. But I will, you guys, the Assembly will get a new clerk's report between now and then. I can give it to you with all those dates.
The dates are on the top of the second page under meetings there. Okay.
And that is all I had, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Any further questions or discussion regarding clerk's report? Okay. The next item on our agenda is citizens and other correspondents. Is there any comments from the Assembly regarding the citizens and the correspondents? Yes, Assembly person hours.
There was just a, a part in there that really stood out to me, the resolution from the Fish and Wildlife Commission, and they had some data in there about the Deschka King Salmon run and how for 10 years from 1997 to 2006, there was an average of 33,000 fish per year in that river. And then despite even no sport harvest allowed in the past two years, we haven't even made the escapement on that river. And the other stat they had in there was that in just 2017 alone, the direct spending on fisheries in the valley was $56 million. And I just thought those were, we've known it, but reiterating the astounding impact on our fisheries and on the fishery businesses in the valley because of the lack of runs. And I know they're asking administration to bring forward some legislation that would cast, classify land along the Deschka that's important for maintaining water temperatures that's been identified. So I, I do hope that that is legislation, or I guess I'm asking if we could bring that forward to us so we can at least take a look at what those lands would be and what that classification would do to make sure that the river at least maintains temperatures that are good for king salmon. So when we get those runs back, we're not going to lose them in the river because we haven't maintained the quality of the river.
Assembly discussion regarding that request, regarding that resolution. Does everybody, yes, Assembly person gamble, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I would suggest that the presenter who presented all the data to us, come in and give the presentation to the Assembly, maybe during the Manager's report. And I could coordinate that with the Fish and Wildlife Commission. It was fascinating to me. And as Tim knows, I've learned so much in the last year and so many months about fish that I had no idea. So I, I can't even begin to repeat what she provided for, so I would suggest that they come in and do the presentation.
Any further discussion regarding that? Does everybody agree? Is that a objective, an instruction to administration? Is everybody okay with them? All righty, sir. Okay. Assembly person hours, did you have further comments? No? Okay. Anyone else have any comments on the items of citizens as well as the correspondents? Okay, hearing none, then having none, then they are presented to us. And Madam Clerk, I am?
I am 25075, reporting the conclusion of contract for bid 2447B with Orion Construction for the final contract amount of $770,594.14 for the Animal Care Exterior Kennel Insight Improvements Project. I am 25089, informing the Assembly of the Borough's participation in a grant application submittal to I C L E I USA Local Governments for Sustainability by the Alaska Sustainable Energy Corporation. I am 2592, informing the Assembly of a grant application submittal requesting 400, $450,000 from Rural and Tribal Assistance Pilot Program for the Caswell Lake Secondary Access Project.
Okay. Are there any comments on the IMs? Okay, seeing and hearing none, and they have been presented. The next item is audience participation, and I see we do have a signup sheet, and no matter what you heard earlier, you still all have three minutes tonight, okay?
So if I take 10 minutes, I could say April Fool's?
Yeah. Okay. Go ahead, Tom.
Thank you. My name, my name is Tom Robertson, and for a year I've been trying to get a letter of approval or a letter of support from the borough, trying to get a emergency fill station for the fire sta, fire department. The picture there depicts alongside the construction area where there's a hydrant down in a hole, and I need that hydrant brought up and a gravel pad put in where two fire trucks can fill up off the road. I don't want them sitting along the shoulder. There's too many accidents, too many people have been hurt and killed sitting on the shoulder of the road. I want the fire trucks to be able to go around, have their own little turnaround area where they can fill up the fire trucks and leave safely without being hit by a car. And that's the whole purpose of that. Every time I call the emergency management, they just say, well, it's not our jurisdiction. Well, the letter of support is everybody's jurisdiction. And if somebody gets hurt and killed, it will be in their jurisdiction. The liability is going to hit them hard. We don't want a fireman killed from the borough. And so, like I said before, when I was in the Kiskiwe Fire Department, we did have a fireman get hit alongside the shoulder of the road. Didn't kill him, but he had to retire out. And when you lose a fireman, we were all the MTs too, so you lose two positions. We don't want to take a chance on that happening. I want the fire trucks off of the shoulder of the road in a nice, safe gravel park. Doesn't even have to be paved, just somewhere where to get the heck off the road. When I was with Chugak Fire Department, we couldn't make an ambulance run unless the tanker went with it. The tank, when you park alongside the highway with the ambulance, the tanker truck had to shield the ambulance so people would smack into the, I don't know why they would smack into the truck, all the lights on and the red and yellow, everything, and it'd still smack into the truck. But it would save the ambulance from anybody else from getting killed. Anyways, I definitely need a letter of support from the borough. I, for a whole year, I've been trying to get one. Didn't cost you anything, but it might help save the life of one of our firemen. Anybody got any questions? It's not April Fool's, it's the truth. All right, thank you very much.
Thanks, Tom. Don Harris?
I was trying to figure out how I could fit this into one minute. Hello, Madam Mayor, and members of the Assembly and the staff. My name is Don Harris. I am a Wasilla and Taupitina resident. I worked for DNS Road Services, a road maintenance contractor for the borough since 1998. I've been involved in road maintenance as an administrator for 26 years. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight to what I view as problems with the current contract and bid structure. In the early days of the contracts, details used to be much simpler, yet the amount of work was the same. Prices were lower and provisions were slimmed down. The effects of seasonal weather on Alaska has not changed over the years. Three feet of snow still flows over the greater blades, berm still happen, and people still get stuck and have a hard time getting around. But we got through it. Back then, a successful bidder was awarded a contract based on the price per mile only. If there were any funds available after maintenance, I think it was sometimes used for repairs and road upgrades. So that was if extra money was left over. Projects were offered to the resident contractor up to $25,000 without having to pay prevailing rage and the costs associated with working with the Department of Labor. Whether or not the borough, whether or not it was borough code then, it should be now. The three quotation code under the open market procedure should be raised to $25,000 to pay for a more reasonable-sized project and the cost of mobilization. Now, I do understand that the cost of business has increased, but today, the contract includes such things as electronic reporting by the public, which is sometimes exaggerated, and but the upside is that the public can make themselves a part of the road maintenance process. But here's what the public doesn't know. There is a cost to electronic reporting, GPS locating, and GPS location of a contractor piece of equipment, which, this is no offense to the IT department, but back in the day, the superintendent drove the roads so he could find where the equipment was and see the work getting done. There is a requirement, there was also a requirement for multiple redundant reports and increased standards of maintenance and the new public construction schedule. Davis Bacon wages are to be paid for even a project as small as $500 and have to follow the state DOT guidelines for highway construction. The Matsui Borough roads aren't highways. The increased wage helps employees, of course, but I also recently learned that striping could also be subject to Davis Bacon wages. Also included is cracked ceiling, calcium chloride application, and tailhead maintenance. These items in the contract are now an upfront cost to the RSA that has to be covered in the budget process. I'll try to pare the rest of this down, but basically, the, there's a lot in the contracts now that costs a lot more. And some of these newer contracts in the areas that are a little bit more depressed are going to have a hard time coming up with the money for the bids that just went out last week. Also, the bids that went out last week, I, I don't know if any of you have looked at the bid forms, they are complicated and hard to figure out. We had some new bidders in the Palmer area last week, and they didn't fill out the bid forms correctly. So they're out. There's no explanation of how to do these bids. They've become so complicated. Also, there were only two bidders last week that, that actually attached the correct forms. And so to me, that means that there was only two responsible bidders from last week's bid opening. So something needs to change, something needs to get simpler. I've been with the borough for 28 years doing road maintenance, since the days that Jim Swing was Public Works Director. And things don't have to be as complicated as they are now.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And Jackie?
Good evening, Mayor and Assembly members. My name is Jackie Gomforth. You've probably all read a very long email that was something that addressed what I had spoken about, and it's about the Rose Group and the E-Rate debacle that's happening. And I want you to know that some of the things in there, besides being gaslighting, are incorrect. The plane conversation was not anybody overhearing anything that's a friend of anybody. It was actually turned into Doge of Alaska in Juneau, and it probably is recorded for all I know. all I know. Okay? And number two, if everything is legitimate to change an E-Rate thing, an E-Rate to consultation, then why is a consultant putting, that they're doing a project for library network reimbursement on library telecommunications on their invoices? Now, I want you to know, I'm past all that, however, at the moment, because I was visiting with librarians in order to figure out what the strategies might have changed to, because I've already been involved with some of the strategies. Number one is to stall. Number two has been to make things difficult, to challenge a book. Number three is to go after the reputation and the intelligence and the background of whoever is challenging. Be sure in your court view for that, too. Number four is to always use the same catchphrases: Nazi, book banning, book burner, censorer. Always use those. Next is to make sure you don't address the books. Don't address the reason they're there. Address the person. These are still the strategies they're using, but the newest one is to make sure the contents within the cover do not get known by anyone. It's the exact same thing that was said two years ago by the Hilkenburg lady in the library conference held in Fairbanks, where she said, "Conservative children need to know all of this sexual content, but to make sure their parents don't know, make sure it's hidden between the covers." Okay? And that's exactly what's happening. So the Library Citizens Advisory Committee is so very important. They're very important because the parents are starting to know what's in there, and how I know that is librarians are starting to tell me that these books are getting very popular now. Ever since I've complained, people are checking them out constantly. And I ask them, "I hope it's not a minor that you're checking them out, too." And of course, they say no, and I'd like to believe that that's true. And they always tell me, "It's actually adults and parents who are checking these out." And that is exactly what I have been trying to do, is to make sure parents know what's between the covers so they can make the determination of what their children should read. It should not be the decision made by an educator who went through a Marxist socialistic agenda in college. It should be made by the parent. And so I thank you so much for the Library Citizens Advisory Committee. They now have eight more books to look at, because unfortunately, the starving out of the LCAC didn't work. So thank you.
Uh huh. Thank you. Mary?
Good evening. Mary Robinson, Matsu Borough resident, and I represent myself. Challenge: An attempt to have a library resource or program, removed or access to it restricted, based on the objections of a person or group. Challenges do not simply involve a person expressing a point of view, rather they are an attempt to remove material from the curriculum or library, thereby restricting the access of others. Ban: A removal of materials from a library based on the objections of a person or group. Sometimes the ban is a decision made by a committee, and other times an administrator or staff member removes books without following a library's policy. Censorship: A decision made by a governing authority or its representatives to suppress, exclude, remove, or restrict public access to a library resource based on a person or group's disapproval of its contents or its author's creator. I came across a term recently, and Mr. Sporopoulos can correct my pronunciation, cui bono. Two words, C-U-I-B-O-N-O. Why you should ask, who benefits? It's a Latin phrase that means who benefits and is used to suggest that there's a high probability that those responsible for a certain event are the ones who stand to gain from it. It can, the first and most notable benefit is that it can help you guide your thinking and figure out who is responsible for actions or events that you're examining. Furthermore, asking cui bono can also help you identify people's ulterior motives. In situations, they conceal those motives, often by claiming to have an alternative motive, such as altruism. For example, when it comes to fighting pseudo-scientific disinformation or unfounded conspiracy theories, asking cui bono can help highlight the fact that many of the individuals and groups who promote this kind of material benefit from a financial or social manner, which makes it more likely that their view is biased. So, over four years ago, when then Matsu Borough School Board President Ryan Ponder wanted to remove books from the school libraries, I asked myself, "Who benefits? Why was a moral crisis being manufactured for the sake of political posturing?" Fast forward to over two years ago, and I find myself asking the same exact questions. Why has the school district, the school board, paid $89,000 to settle a lawsuit because they wanted to remove books? Why have they paid $30,000 in a settlement to silence two students' voices? That's not even including what the legal fees are, a conservative estimate, no pun intended. I'd have to say probably usually $250,000. Thank you for your time.
Uh huh. Thank you. Kathy?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Assembly and Staff. My name is Kathy Kaiser, and tonight I'm speaking on behalf of myself. There are some curious goings-on behind the scenes in the Borough administration that I'm not sure you're aware of. As you know, the Borough Library Board was tasked with overseeing a strategic plan for our five public libraries, one that was sorely overdue. In actuality, the Borough administration is in complete control of this process, and the board, well, I'm not sure what role they actually have in the process. Admin identified three possible companies to complete the process, put the project out for bid, and the planning department chose the Rose Group in South Dakota. After the Rose Group came to visit each of our libraries, talking to the public, the librarians, and the library board, and making a good impression on all, they returned back to their home to work on the plan. On their flight home, someone associated with their group was supposedly overheard on the plane, making a comment, something to the effect that their task was to plan how to deal with the anti-trans agenda in the Borough. The overheard comment was then repeated to a local legislator, who then called our Borough administration, at which point Manager Mike Brown immediately terminated the contract with the Rose Group. That contract was terminated over a third-hand rumor. Because the library board didn't meet in March, they have not yet been made aware of this, but will inevitably take significant backlash from the public, even though they had absolutely nothing to do with the situation. Where this puts the strategic plan is currently a mystery. So there's that. What you should know about the Rose Group International can be found on their website. They're a project management group that believes in the power of community. With Rose Group International, you get what you see. They don't pretend everything is okay when it isn't. They don't tell you things are a disaster if they aren't. They address conflict productively, and they made our libraries feel united. The Rose Group is a 100% women-owned business, and 75% of their employees are women. Owner Dr. Rachel Headley has given TED Talks and been published numerous times in Forbes Magazine. When Mike Brown terminated the contract with the Rose Group because of third-hand hearsay, he not only cost the Borough thousands of dollars, but he also alienated a multimillion-dollar international corporation who took on the library board's little strategic plan project because they have a passion for libraries. What a wasted opportunity.
Okay. Randy Crosby?
Good evening. My name is Randy Crosby, and I live at mile 128 on the Parks Highway in the community of Trapper Creek. I'm here tonight to comment and make others aware of a permit the Borough Land Use Department is applying for to have a 30-acre gravel pit put in at mile 128 on the Parks Highway. I just got this public notice. It's Earth Material Extraction, Matsu Borough 17.30. I have several issues with the permit that I'll try and summarize, as I don't have enough time to get too detailed. First, I feel the gravel pit is unnecessary and has little public benefit. The Borough already has pits in the area. One is three miles to the north at mile 131, and another one, two miles to the south at mile 126. They both have plenty of gravel and have already been cleared of the old growth forest and could, they could use some reclamation work as well. The permit is to benefit a contractor that's building a new bridge at the Parks Highway right at mile 128 to 128 and a half range. They're replacing a culvert and installing a bridge. There's a lot of dirt activity going on there. It, this permit, it doesn't identify the contractor at all. It appears the Borough is applying for the permit instead of the contractor. It appears that the Borough, the public, is paying for all the work that's going into the permit and the public notice and things like that. It just appears that the Borough is doing this on behalf of the contractor and not the public. There's no mention in the permit of any revenues being generated by the sale of gravel or in receiving any of the overburden that's coming off the construction site that's going to be placed in the pit that's described in the permit. One thing that really is troubling me on this, and there's a bit of a history in this that I probably just won't have time to go into, but the one thing that's coming out that really, once I read the permit, really bothered me and prompted me to drive in here and talk about this, is that the permit completely ignores the surveyed and dedicated public easement for the winter trail called the Chalitna Bluff Trail, that I was instrumental in planning within my community, constructing, and I maintained it for many, many years through my business, and only recently withdrew from the maintenance just because I could no longer afford the, it was all on grant money. There's really no profit. It just barely paid for itself, and I just kind of got to the point where I'm not able to do that anymore. This trail goes directly through that 30-acre parcel. The permit claims there's no private properties in the area, and yet, the map clearly shows private property in the area that identifies as the vicinity of the property. I live exactly one-half mile from the closest corner of that 30 acres. Fails to disclose any real public use, except for open space. Well, there's already open space. There's the winter trail, there's a summer hiking trail down to the Chalitna River at the mouth of Railroad Creek. It's used for fishing, berry picking, and hunting, and I understand. And I'll come back in two weeks and pick up where I left off, but I just want to make everybody aware of this, and I'm going to be following through with comments and more stuff, so thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else that would like to testify on their audience participation? And we will have another audience participation, but if some of you are here regarding the unfinished business, that will not be a public hearing, so if you want to give input regarding that, either this audience participation or the next one is, you want to be sure and say something. Okay? Okay. All righty. Okay. I wasn't sure if he was coming. Caleb? Okay. So the first person on the phone, go ahead, please.
Yes. Thank you. My name is Linda Klein, C-L-I-N-E. And good evening, Madam Mayor and Assembly Members. I'm speaking on behalf of myself. I served as Board Secretary for RSA 15 here in Caswell Lakes for many years, and my husband served during those same years as an alternate member, and finally as RSA 15's primary. I'm speaking in reference to Ordinance 25-017, which is a proposed ordinance amending the Matsu Borough 525 service areas to provide for a five-member Board of Supervisors for the road service areas in Castle Lakes, Greater Willow, Meadow Lakes, Gold Trail, Greater Talkeetna, and Trapper Creek. As a member of Assembly District 7, I wish to express my opposition to an ordinance increasing our RSA 15 Board from three to five members. Each RSA presently has the option to petition the Borough for an increase of its Board members from three to five. At a future time when growth and development reaches a point the Borough believes is necessary, each Board can simply petition the Borough to increase their Board membership from three to five. Historically, a number of RSA Boards of Supervisors share continual difficulty in seeding and maintaining their present three-member Boards. Even now, the two-member quorum required to hold a meeting with a three-member Board has its many challenges. Increasing Board membership to five, requiring a three-member quorum, will certainly often find the Board unable to meet its quorum, rendering the Board ineffective. An increase in Board membership to five, in an effort to allow two Board members to discuss road concerns outside of an advertised meeting, has no usefulness or merit. Presently, one Board member can meet with a Borough Supervisor and handle things just fine. I appreciate this opportunity to express these serious concerns and my opposition to the proposed amendment. Thank you.
Uh huh. Thank you. The next person online, please.
Hello. My name is Ruth Wood, and I'm in Talkeetna. And I am here to talk about OR 25017, but because I'm listening, I find I have to, have to speak about the Rose Group, because we have a fantastic library. We have wonderful books in our library. We have wonderful people that go to our library. And I'm one of the people that went to the Rose Group's meeting that was open to hear what the public had to say. I do not believe that the words transgender came up. I would be very surprised to hear that they came up in any of the meetings. I am extremely surprised to hear that somebody, I don't know who, nobody said, overheard something on an airplane, called an Alaska Legislature, who then called the Borough, and the manager terminated a contract over, I think that was overheard on an airplane. I'd like to know what Mr. Brown did to determine what was said on the plane, and if the report to him was accurate. And I just, I am very, very upset to hear that our Borough, which is supposed to be professional, is doing things like this. So we have a great library. Our parents are involved, our kids are involved. It's wonderful, and I am really getting tired of people slamming our libraries and librarians. Okay. Now, on to road services. So we have a three-member Board, like all the other communities up in the Northern Valley. That's enough. And trying to get five, you know, our assembly person has not come to our Community Council. He has not come to road service meetings, so we don't know why he wants to do that. The statement that it will make open meetings violations less, it doesn't make any sense, because the road supervisor, as someone just said, can call the Public Works Department. And that's how things up here. We just don't have that many roads. So what this will do is it will make it almost impossible for our road service board to operate. And that is not good business. So I am really, 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 I'm just so concerned about seeing these things going on where, you know, you give the public a chance to speak, but then you don't listen to us. So I don't know. I think Mr. Bernier needs to come to Community Council meetings. He needs to come to road service. He needs to come to road service meetings, and he needs to relook at this and see what is the need? And will he really be? Assembly members to vote no on OR 25017. And let's go on to doing some real business. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person online, please.
Hi, my name is John Swassenberg. I'm speaking about 25-017. Talkeetna RSA 29 is low population, small budget, virtually no large projects. Nearly all roads are gravelled. Roadwork is primarily remediation via the rock crusher called Red's Drainage. It's not complex. We've done five for decades with a three-member board. Five members is overkill and more difficult to recruit members and make quorum. The Talkeetna Community Council and members of the community have demonstrated support for the three-member status quo. RSA 29 did not ask for this and unanimously opposes it. If we needed five members, we'd initiate the process provided for in code. Mr. Bernier has never attended an RSA 29 board meeting. He has not returned my phone calls from last February. He did not contact our RSA Board to explain or get our opinion on this legislation. When an assembly member sponsors legislation that affects his home district, other assembly members when voting sometimes defer to the home district sponsor. Such deference is legitimate, however, only when the issue enjoys strong community support. Here you have a situation where all the of all of those affected posed the proposed action. The community council and members of the public oppose no stakeholder support. And the sponsor fails to inform and engage those affected. Deference to the sponsoring assembly person is absolutely not legitimate under these circumstances. Listen to the road boards. This legis legislation will impair the functioning of the boards for no legitimate reason. RSA 29, public engagement is strong. I give a verbal report each month to the community council and respond to questions. I submit a written report monthly that goes through the entire community council email list. We do not have an OMA problem. We meet once a month. Outside of meetings, we do not pre-arrange or pair up to look at road problems. Why would we? A board member can bring the problem to the upcoming meeting or if urgent, he can contact the Borough Road Superintendent. The road superintendent, not the RSA, has the authority to get problems fixed. RSA's are strictly advisory and do not direct the contractor or make policy. All affected RSA's oppose this. Big Board opposes it. Talkeetna Community opposes it. Legislation is being considered tonight for the five-member Connect RSA Board to go back to three members. The five-member Big Lake Board is in disarray. Given this backdrop, why on earth would you mess with something that has functioned well for decades? Please defeat OR 25-017. Thank you.
Do we have anybody else online? Okay, go ahead. The next person online, please.
Yes, my name is Michael Leach, L.E.A.C.H. I'm calling about 2517. We don't need five members, just as you hear everybody else. We just need three members, the way it's worked for decades. Just leave it alone. I'd like to see Ron Bernier show up for a couple of meetings though, so he can understand that what he's trying to do is not proper. Thank you.
Next person online, please.
Hi, my name is Jessie Leach, L.E.A.C.H. I live in RSA 15. My business also hosts the meetings. I see how well the boards function already with three. I think five is absolutely unnecessary. I think it would be extremely hard to get volunteers for the board. We do have quite a bit of attendance to meetings, but attending meetings and volunteering are completely different levels of commitment. And I don't think that it would be very easy for our area to fill five-member boards. But I also don't think it's necessary. The three-member boards have been working just fine. Why fix something that isn't broke? I also sit on the Upper Susitna Community Council I for about two years now. I am speaking for myself, of course. However, our assembly person has never been to a meeting that I have sat at in the almost two years I've been there. I feel it's hard to know what our area needs if you're not ever in our area. I would like to see more representation in our area so we can get things that work for us. This moving to a five-member board is not it. Thank you very much for your time. Please vote against it.
Next person online, please.
Yes, my name is Randall Sparks. I represent the Susitna Community Council. We oppose 25017. We don't understand why it was brought up in the first place. Everything seemed to be working quite well here for decades. And it's brought up by a person who does not even venture up into the valley. We're the unrepresented part of the valley. Everything north of Meadow Lakes is ignored. Please vote against 25017 and Ron. Give us a good excuse why you can't attend any meetings of any kind. I'm done. Have a good day.
Next person online, please.
Uh, yes, hello. My name is Patricia Fisher. I am with RSA 27. Uh, we have, uh, would like to say that we oppose to the moving the the number of members of the RSA Board, five. We are opposed to that. RSA 27 did not ask for it. We don't want it. Our board is working just fine without it. Mr. Bernier came to the council meeting and said he was thinking of not doing this. We contacted people and we did come up with a couple more members who said, yeah, I could do it. But that's beside the point. Why would Meadow Lakes be singled out to have a five-member board, which is what is in Mr. Farnop's amendment, to the rest of the RSA Boards in the valley? It is not right. It is unnecessary. I have not heard one favorable comment to this action by Mr. Bernier. Please vote against this measure. Thank you.
Do we have another person online, sir? Okay, go ahead. Whoever's next online.
Hello, this is this is Donna Massey, Primary RSA 30 in Trapper Creek. Madam Mayor and Assembly Members, I'm speaking again, I think this is the third time, against Ordinance 025017. Today I asked myself, why? Why are we talking about this for a third time? I reviewed the IM, which is supposed to justify the ordinance, and it mentions increasing populations and high interest in the upper valley RSA's. Now, even with growth, we are nowhere near the population of core area RSA's. And those core area, high-population RSA's are functioning well with three-member boards. So I don't believe that's a justification. As to the high interest in our local roads, that should be reflected by attendance at our regular meetings. In RSA 30, meeting attendance varies, much like borough assembly meetings vary depending on topics. When a certain area has a road concern, residents in that area attend and speak. When the concern no longer exists, they no longer attend meetings. If there is such a high interest in local roads, why is it difficult to recruit members? It's because the three-member RSA Boards are adequately adequately addressing the needs of their communities. Now, earlier, in earlier testimony, I had mentioned that the goal of everyone here should be the simplest, most efficient government possible. Given the troubled track records of the two five-member RSA Boards, how can you justify forcing five-member boards on all of the current RSA's of District 7? You know, there's just not enough proven benefits to justify this ordinance. Our boards are functioning in their present form. They are not broken. They don't need fixing. The quality of a board is much more important than the size of the board. We have good boards. If Mr. Bernier came to our meetings, he would recognize the quality of the community service that we provide as advisory members of our boards. Please vote down Ordinance 02517. Thank you.
We have, do we have another person online? No, okay. So bring it back here. If there's anybody that hasn't testified under audience participation would like to do so at this time. Okay, I don't see anybody moving, so I'll close audience participation and Madam Clerk.
Ordinance 2526, an ordinance reappropriating $122,108.95 from the miscellaneous capital project funds to the Roads and Bridges Capital Projects Fund, fund, excuse me, to acquire right-of-way property with accompanying Resolution 2522, resolution amending the scope of work and budgets for the fiscal year 2021 permit funding for working in Alaska Department of Transportation and public facilities right-of-way, the fiscal year 2022 right-of-way management of acquired parcels, and the fiscal year 2019 reward Meridian Parkway Phase 2 project, amending the budgets of the fiscal year 2021 right-of-way acquisition and the fiscal year 2022 right-of-way acquisition, extending the date of completion for the project fundings to June 30, 2027 for the right-of-way acquisition purposes. If you're on the phone and would like to speak to this, press star 3.
Okay, staff, hi.
Madam Mayor, Manager, Member 70, Tom Adams, Public Works Director. This ordinance tonight basically is a housecleaning item. We have some funds that remain in in two different accounts that we want to consolidate for the purpose of using potentially to support acquisition of rights-of-way for those types of projects that have already been approved by an area-wide vote. And and that's simply what it is. We had some leftover funds from the Stuart Meridian Project that weren't necessary to supply our match, and we provided final payment to that. And the remaining funds are from miscellaneous capital projects. So altogether, we're going to move $122,000 to be consolidated with an existing $37,000 and put it in one fund, 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 project.
Any questions to staff? Yes, Assemblyperson Hale, go ahead.
Yeah, so what projects are we acquiring right-of-way for with this fund? Any in specific projects, or is it kind of just a general right-of-way acquisition fund?
So through the mayor, Assemblymember Hale. We have not identified a specific project. We have a handful of projects that could be candidates. You know, we have a project over off of Parks Highway Museum Drive that's been a project that's been designed and ready to construct for a number of years. We have some rights-of-way that are necessary to acquire to support the construction of that project. We are starting to see some some development along that corridor that caused us concern that if we don't get in there sooner than later, then when we do go to acquire that, it could be more expensive. So that that's an example. That's not to say that's exactly one that we're targeting right now. There are similarly some areas along Burma Road for a design that was accomplished many years ago. It needs updated. But there are areas where we might benefit from acquiring rights-of-way to to get it at a cost that's much less if we just wait around. And in fact, we recognize that the we are constrained by using these funds only on those projects that have been approved via an area-wide vote.
Assemblyperson hours, do you have comment or question?
Yeah, this is more of a comment. It's a pet peeve about how we write these. And besides feeling bad for the clerk having to say all this out loud, it like it makes it tough for the public. And and I had to go into the bowels of this to, maybe that's not the right word. But I had to go in, I mean, basically, we're transferring funds from $100,000 from existing unused funds and existing project accounts that we can purchase right-of-way on upcoming road projects. So I just, it's nothing else but just if we can strive to put this in plain English, I think it benefits all of us for understanding it. And most importantly, I think, for the public in being able to look at our agendas and know what's going on and saves the clerks some breath.
Noted.
I would anticipate probably it's really for the auditor so that the auditor can trace this money when they come. And, you know, I don't know. That's what I would assume with accounting background.
Yeah, yeah. And even if if that's the case, and this will make the clerks out of breath more, but we could put at the top the common language and then still include in the title if it's required for accounting. But I just, I I had to go down the rabbit trail to figure out what this was. And I'm sure anybody else in the pub, well, I don't know. I I think other people probably struggled as well if they were trying to quickly figure out what this was about.
It's a trail down memory lane, right? Going back five, four or five years. Any other comments? All right, thanks, Tom. I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing on Ordinance 25-026 and Resolution 25-022. Anyone, we do not have a sign-up sheet. Anyone is welcome to address the Assembly on either this ordinance or resolution at this time. Okay, I don't see anybody. Do we have anybody online, sir? We do not. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. And Deputy Mayor.
I move to adopt an Ordinance 25-026 and Resolution 25-022.
Okay, discussion. Discussion. Any objection to the legislation? Seeing none, then the legislation passes. Madam Clerk.
Ordinance 25043, an ordinance amending MSB 18040358, Port Commission Membership, to add an assembly seat that is a non-voting member. If you're on the phone and would like to speak to this, press star 3. And also, I will do the staff report real quick, Madam Mayor. Assemblymember Gamble requested that this come forward. In previous years, an assembly member did sit on the Port Commission as a voting member. However, that was taken off. That position was taken off a number of years ago. This position would add one assembly member as a non-voting member, and they would still go through the vacancy process.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Yes, Assemblyperson Hale.
So there currently is no seat for the assembly member then?
Correct. This is adding a seat back on.
Deputy Mayor, did you? Was your hand up or no?
I'd be in full support of that.
Any other comments from questions from the Assembly? Assemblyman McKee?
I couldn't even, you know, reading through the thing, and then I don't know why we're do, why we think we need to do this.
Okay, should I? I'll go ahead and do the public hearing first, and then we'll bring it back. Okay? Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing on Ordinance 25-043. Anyone that would like to testify either for or against this ordinance? Nobody online? Okay, and no sign-up sheet. So close the public hearing. Assemblyperson Gamble.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to adopt Ordinance 25-043 and would like to use my one opportunity to comment, to speak to it if I could.
Sure, go ahead, sir.
So I contacted Lonnie and asked her to put this on the agenda, and she drafted the ordinance for me. I've thought that the Port McKenzie is important to the Matsu Borough even before I got on the Assembly. I've always thought that it is key, one of the keys to the future of the Matsu Borough. And so when I got on the Assembly, since it's in my district, I started attending meetings, the regularly scheduled ones, and even the ones for like the military that came out there and our national legislative delegation and other important VIPs. And I think it's really important that the Assembly has a seat on the commission, that it shows that we're supportive of everything that the Port wants to do in the in the future. I would have preferred that it would have been a voting seat, but they already have five members, and to have six voting members would kind of make it clunky. So I'm happy with the non-voting position at the Port, and I hope eventually that the mayor will appoint me to that seat if you approve this. So thank you.
Further discussion? Yes, Assemblyperson McKee.
As everybody knows, when this, whenever we started talking about the Port, when I first came on, I was absolutely thumbs down. And and all the meetings and whatever else happened really didn't seem to make any difference until we got the guy we got in there. Now Dave, Dave does what I think that position. I would rather speak directly to Dave. I'd rather he directly come and address this body rather than filtering it through because whatever he's, whatever he's doing, it's 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 working. And I don't want to mess with success. Maybe at some point in the future, it'd be okay. But right now, it's just expanding government, and I'm not for that at all. just expanding government, and I'm not for that at all. And I think that we are giving him our votes of approval. By the way, we vote for the projects that he puts forth because we believe in them, because that he's the man who's explaining it. It, that's how that has come through to me over the last four years. So I don't think that that's necessary. I, I like direct communication. I want to talk to him. I don't want to talk to somebody here who said that and then comes back and reports. Even though you might be wonderful at it, I'd still rather talk, get it right from the source. That's my, that's why I would not support this.
Okay, further discussion? Assemblyperson Sumner, go ahead.
Yeah, nothing would preclude other Assembly, well, two other Assemblymen, members from coming to these meetings with this one seat, right?
That is correct.
Further discussion? Assemblyperson Farnath?
So this would only, assuming that vacancy will created and the one Assembly member with what I'm hearing that Mr. Gamble wants to be on there, I guess that would be, that will only give him voice. So if any other Assembly member would come, we wouldn't have that same voice if there was a meeting or anything. Is that, my understanding correctly of what this will do? I guess who knows the rules of how the board, non-voting member is, or would it, or could we expand this so that additional members besides just one member can also come and participate in, in that board meeting, where it's only now limited to one and only one person? And there's a, the commitment for however many years in it. I want to understand the, the rules of that.
It's my understanding now, you know, that Lonnie and the attorney, correct me if I'm wrong, right now, the Port Commission meetings are open to the public. If any of the Assembly people wanted to attend those at any time, they could, just if, you know, you can't do more than three of you show up at the meeting. But anybody, both public as well as Assembly are welcome to attend now. Does that answer your question, sir?
If, okay, if there's, they'd be welcome, I guess, to attend, why is there another seat that would need to be on there? If, or is, I guess, what is the point of creating a seat that is non-voting yet? Is that just for discussion sakes? Or I, I'm just trying to understand the, the reasoning behind it?
Uh huh. Assemblyperson Gamble, go ahead.
Thank you. It adds an official position on the commission. So when the commission goes to do business, I can go with the commission as an official commission member. When the commission votes, and correct me if I'm saying anything wrong, Nick, but when the commission votes on the items that they need to vote on, I won't be able to vote on those items, but I'll be able to speak to them and add my thoughts. And, but like you said, you know, if two more Assembly members want to attend a commission meeting, they're more than welcome to show up too. It just, I think, adds a little bit more legitimacy to the Port Commission. You have an Assembly member that's sitting on the commission. It just shows a little bit more official support by having somebody with an Assembly member title on the commission. Thank you.
Okay, yes, Deputy Mayor?
So with one, one Assembly person on there being non-voting because it's six and being an even number, if there was two Assembly people, could they be voting then?
Go ahead.
Through the Mayor to Assemblymember Bernier. Yes, that is why I suggested it be a non-voting member, because that would end up, you'd have six people and you don't have the odd number. So if you, if the Assembly wants to do two Assembly members and make them voting, that would work.
Let's, I'd like to amend that.
Okay, just, the member, the board is only five members. And if you add two more that are Assembly seats, I think that, that's pushing too much.
All right, I withdraw then.
Okay. Because, I mean, you could, you know, you could easily stop, you get a couple Assembly people that are not in favor of the port and end up being those voting members. You could stop stuffs there. So, I mean, you're welcome to make your amendment, and I'll recognize that.
Okay, it's back on the table.
All righty. So, and are the two members voting or non-voting?
Voting.
Voting, okay. So we have an amendment on the floor. Okay.
Question to related to, I guess, amendment. Is there any other commissions on the, currently that have Assembly members voting or non-voting currently established?
Go ahead.
And what are they, if I may ask?
To, to Assemblymember Farnath through the Mayor, the one that I can think of off the top of my head is the MSB Fish and Wildlife Commission. They've got two members. And then there are also the Joint Assembly School Board Committee on School Issues, and then the new financial one that just got created. Those are the ones that I can think of off the top, School Site Selection Committee.
I guess, I guess the, the port, it's its own entity, and then, so does that, I, I don't know if this opens the door for a lot of, kind of, the idea, I think, is our says and other kind of type of boards is, is for them to do their business and for us to do our business, what's in front of us is the way I see it. So I don't know if two Assembly voting members on that board, that changes the quorum requirements, I believe. And I could see maybe intent is good, but not necessarily the results will be good.
Okay, Assemblyperson Sumner?
Yeah, I was just hoping that Assemblymember Gamble, since he moved the original ordinance, could weigh in on the amendment.
Mm-hmm.
Can you share your opinion on the, Mr. Bernier's amendment?
I never thought it was going to get this complicated, to tell you the truth, without just adding an official Assembly member to the commission. It was a good thing. And I, personally, I'd rather not add voting members without having Dave here to give his feelings or if the manager wants to weigh in on it. I just, like I said, I attend almost all the meetings, both the ones that are scheduled and the special meetings that they have. I think it's important for the Assembly to show solidarity with the Port Commission and Dave and the work that he does. So just having somebody on there as an official representative of the Assembly, just like on the Fish and Wildlife Commission and all the other commissions, is a good thing. So without Dave here to, to give his peace of mind about having extra voting members on there, I'd be uncomfortable with that. So I would support the original ordinance, but not the voting one.
I withdraw my amendment.
Okay. Is there, is there any objection to the amendment being withdrawn? Okay, Assemblyperson McKee, have comment?
Yeah, I, I think it's, it's overkill. I think we don't need to do it. I think, as I said, and we're not kind of going past that, the biggest vote is how we vote to spend the money. And every time that they come forth with something that needs money, he justifies it, we do it. I can't think of anything, I cannot think of anything over the past four years where we actually, I might have voted against one or two things in the beginning. But, but as a body, we support him, we support the port with the way we vote. So it's not necessary, as far as I'm concerned, to have somebody saying, yeah, well, here I am as an Assembly member officially sitting here. I'm sitting here as an official Assembly member, and I'm voting for what Dave's doing. So just to remind everybody that I think that's just superfluous to have, to have that. You can go to, anybody can go to any meeting. But to have government say, we're going to do this, I don't think we need it. That's all, that's all I'll say.
Assemblyperson Hale?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to call the question.
Okay. Is there any objection to calling the question? Yes. There is an objection.
If I can get the members to vote on calling for the question, yes. If you vote yes, the debate will stop. If you vote no, it will, it will continue. Madam Mayor, it failed with Assemblymembers McKee, Hale, Gamble, and Sumner in support. It needs five votes.
Okay. I'd just like to make some comments, because I was here when we took off the voting member from before. And the thing regarding voting members that we ran into, even on the Fish and Wildlife, is that, that counts for the quorum. And we do have two Assembly people, and one Assembly person has not attended a meeting of the Fish and Wildlife Commission for some time. And so when we had a number of resignations or retirements at the end of December, and I had not appointed the two new members, we had to bring back the couple of people that had retired to come back during the month of January, which they can do. But, so that's the other thing. If you're looking at having voting members on these boards, they count for the quorum. And so the, and the other thing is, right now, the Port Commission meets at three PM on Mondays, and, and they meet monthly January, April, July, and they meet here in the Borough Building. So that's the only thing I wanted to caution you on is, you know, I think all of us are very much in support of the port and would like to know the day-to-day things that are going on. But remember, that is an obligation and it counts towards the quorum. So. Assemblyperson Farnath, did you?
Question to sponsor. I guess my question is, so as a non-voting member, you'll still have a seat at the table, you discuss, you put your input in, hopefully, I guess, you know, if there's difference, you can try to influence but not actually vote. But then that vote, that influence comes from you as individual, not that we, we support the port, that's not the discussion here. But as an Assembly member, but then that might not be the rest of the body's opinion, I guess. I could, I, I guess I could see kind of like, almost like, well, as an Assembly, if, you know, member, like, if you don't vote this way, well, maybe, you know, there's going to be consequence type of thing. I almost think that separate but, body has its own entity. And if, I guess, the influence questions I have, if it could potentially have, feel them pressure based on Assembly's present, like, we're the upper body, we fund things, we approve things, and I want you to guys would see pass this way or vote this way. That is my only personal concern with that. So I don't know if you, you, if that, now, if, if that is not a member, and then you as a public come and speak as, you know, just on a personal, then I guess they might feel not as pressured voting or making decisions certain way. I guess that, that's my just concern.
Assemblyperson Gamble, go ahead, sir.
I don't think that they would feel pressured. If you knew the group that's on the commission, they're pretty strong-willed, strong-minded people, and they pretty much say what's on their mind. I do add to the conversation, but I make it clear that I speak for myself as an Assembly person, not for the rest of the Assembly, just like I do on the Fish and Wildlife Commission. I sit on that commission also as a voting member. And I add my opinion to the conversation. But I'm by far nowhere near the expert that mostly the rest of that board is. And so what I add to the conversation a lot of times is about my legislative experience in Juneau and how they can better represent funding from the state of Alaska and things like that. So I just add to the conversation. All this does is take me attending all of these meetings anyways and giving the Assembly an official representation on the commission. I mean, I'm already going there, and I'm adding to the conversation. It's just, like I said, it's making it an official position on the Port Commission.
Further discussion? Let's see, I know Stephanie and then Deputy Mayor, okay.
I would just say there's, all our boards do good work, but there's some that are kind of significant for the Valley. And I think Fish and Wildlife is one of those because of the, the amount that fisheries brings in and how important it is to life out here. And then the port is another one. So I don't have any problem putting a, a non-voting member on there that is from the Assembly. And I don't, I don't think it'll impair their ability to do their work, especially as a non-voting member.
Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, I can, I concur. I just want to, whoever we put on there, is, I support the port big time. There's a, a big future going on out there. And someday it's going to really.
Okay. It, it doesn't spell it out, but I talked to the attorney today, and, and Lonnie did say it also when she was doing her report. So what, if this passes, what will happen is anybody from the Assembly that's interested in being that non-voting member, you will contact Lonnie, and then she will contact me with the, if it's one person or all seven of you. And then I'll make the decision, and it'll come before all of you as a confirmation, just like any other appointment. Okay, so you understand, you, all of you still have an opportunity to weigh in. Yeah, Assemblyperson.
So I just want to verify one more thing with Lonnie. Lonnie, you said a non-voting member does not count towards a quorum, correct?
Right, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Madam, can you explain, you said, what you said last time? I, I, just now, I did not fully understand what, what you're explaining.
What I was saying?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so what will happen, if this passes, then I will ask the Assembly people that are interested in being appointed to the non-voting member position to contact Lonnie. It will go then on our vacancy report. She will forward to me the names of those of you that said you wanted it. I will make a decision and recommend to the Assembly, and it'll come then to your, to your Assembly on the vacancy report, and you will vote on it whether, you know, whichever one of you that I choose. Okay, so that's, it'll be handled like a regular vacancy, only it will come to Lonnie. You guys will reach out to Lonnie. So if there's more, I could, I couldn't get it if there were three, two of you that would reach out to me, more than two, we'd be violating the open meetings laws. So it needs to go through the clerk's office.
And when that happened, because I was not here for previous confirmation to the, like, out of the Assembly, does the person who applies recuses themselves, or it gets you vote for themselves, or if there's two people, how does that been handled in the past?
I don't know. Mr. Attorney, would they have to excuse themselves if, if they're?
I don't really remember. I'd have to hit the books a little bit. I, I, I will have to research it. My seventy percent confidence answer is, is that yes, you don't vote on your own appointment. But I'll check.
Okay. So you'll get back to us on that. Okay. All righty, further discussion? Are we ready? Any objection to ordinance twenty-five dash zero four-three? Okay, we do have an objection, and Madam Clerk?
Members can go ahead and vote. It passes with Assemblymember Farnath and McKee opposed.
Okay.
Ordinance twenty-five zero four-five and ordinance amending MSB five-two-five oh-two-four, Connect Road Service Area number seventeen, to provide for a three-member board. If you're on the phone and would like to speak to this, press star three.
Okay, Mr. Attorney, are you the staff for this?
I am. Currently, the Connect Road Service Area has a five-member board. This is, ordinance is sponsored by Assemblymember Gamble to return the Connect Road Service Area to a three-member board. The history is, is that on September fifth, twenty-twenty-three, so September of twenty-twenty-three, an ordinance passed to make this a five-member board with the, the IM back then said, it allows for more members of the public be involved, brings more people to the table, and vote on a wide variety of areas the board must discuss. However, since the membership was increased, those two extra seats have never been filled. In January of twenty-twenty-four, one of the members resigned. That left only two members on the board. They could not meet because they had no quorum. In March, one of those two resigned, leaving one member. And in May of twenty-twenty-four, the final member resigned, and the board is vacant. Again, this is sponsored by Assemblymember Gamble. This change lowers the barrier to having a quorum in an attempt to get a functional board up and running.
Okay, questions to staff? Okay, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing then for ordinance twenty-five dash zero four-five. Anybody that would like to testify regarding this ordinance? Have anybody online, sir? No? Okay, one last chance. Okay, so I'll close the public hearing, and Assemblyperson Gamble?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to adopt ordinance two-five dash zero four-five. I move to adopt ordinance 25-045 and like to speak to it.
Yes, go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Like the attorney said, there are no members on the board right now. I've attended both community council meetings out there, asked members of the public, and so far, nobody wants to be part of the RSA board. They're just too busy living their lives. So as the attorney said, in an effort to try and just get some kind of board up and running there, I'd like to reduce the number down to three, and that would lower the barrier for a quorum. And hopefully, sometime in the near future, I'll be able to get folks to join the RSA board. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Further discussion? Is there any objection? We do have an objection.
Madam Clerk?
I get the members to go ahead and vote. It passes with Assemblymember Bernier, opposed.
Okay. Now we are to the second audience participation, and we do have a sign-up sheet. So Juan, Sean, I guess it is.
Sean McBride.
McBride.
Madam Mayor, Assemblymen, Borough Staff, thanks for the opportunity to speak. My name's Sean McBride. I live in the Caswell area, which is RSA 15. I'm here to speak in opposition of ordinance 25-017 to increase the RSA boards to five members from three. You've heard from the road board chairs, you've heard from the community councils, you've probably gotten letters and resolutions from all of these places. I've attended our RSA meeting, I've attended multiple Susitna Community Council meetings, I've attended several big board meetings, and I've also been to four assembly meetings since this ordinance was originally proposed. I have heard dozens of residents of District 7 voice their opposition to this ordinance. In all of the meetings that I've attended, I've only heard two people speak in favor of this ordinance. They were both from Big Lake, and they're not affected by this ordinance. The people of District 7 are not in favor of this. I would encourage you to vote against this ordinance. Thank you.
DJ?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Assemblymembers and Staff. I'm DJ McBride, Chair of Caswell Lakes RSA 15. I'm here to speak against OR 25-017, much to your surprise. For the fourth time, logging in a total of 480 miles just on this one issue. I can go over the same old reasons that the RSA board and Caswell residents are against it, the fact that Assemblymember Bernier did not talk to the RSA or the residents about this. That is very hard to give five, three people, never mind five people, to sit on RSA boards due to volunteer opportunities and a small population pool. I could point out that the only two five-member boards aren't functional. One of them's just got changed to three members due to a lack of applicants, and one due to conflicts on the board. And again, I could point out that all our, all six RSA boards, and even District 7 community councils, have spoken out against it, including the big board. Indeed, everyone that spoke on this issue at the last meeting spoke against it, RSA board members and residents alike. Now I'd like to talk about input. I was told that more input is needed. Assemblyman Bernier has attended almost none of the RSA, FSA, or community council meetings in his district, either in person, by phone, or online. Adding two more members to these boards will not increase input if no one is there to get it. The purpose of advisory boards is to provide a conduit between the residents, the assembly, and the mayor. A three-member board can provide that service just as well as a five-member board, just as I am doing now. Therefore, please vote no on this. Thank you.
Stephen Edwards?
Hello, Stephen Edwards, RSA 27. I can't match the number of miles that DJ put in, but I have been here three times myself. And I guess I'd like to add, you already know my, my positions on it, I won't rehash all those, but I'd like to add that this is not a time-sensitive issue. There's no urgent thing we're trying to fix that needs fixed right away that can solve some problem. And so I guess my request is sort of the same as last time. Let's get rid of this and ask the additional participants, if there is some for any boards, to come to the meetings. And the ones, I know there's some applicants for my meeting, let's ask them to come to my meetings for a year. And if they come and they participate, I'll try to do my very best to include their positions, and they can see whether they like being on the board. And if that goes on for a year and they love it, then maybe, you know, I'll come back and I'll ask, let's make my board larger. But I feel like I can include their, their testimony, their positions, and I can represent those, as was just mentioned, back to the assembly effectively without them being sitting board members, and we'll have very productive meetings with three-member board and audience participation with these others. And I sit on the big board, I know the other primaries that have spoke to this, and I feel that they would do the same thing. If someone came to their meeting and expressed a position, they would be willing to consider that and present it back to the assembly, if it took some sort of action request. So I don't see the time-sensitive issue of this. I guess I'm asking you to vote this down, and then I commit to bringing it back if I get a full five-member participation for a year. I'll bring it back and say, hey, I got a lot of participation, let's do my individual one. And any of the other RSAs can do that. Meanwhile, let's vote this down, please. Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience that would like to testify on this issue or any other issue? Have anybody online? Would you not, sir? Okay, so I'll close audience participation. We have not had a break this evening. Does anybody want to have a break, or should we continue on? Oh, I see some yeses. Okay, okay. All righty, so we'll go ahead and come back at 8:00 PM.
I'd like to call the meeting back to order. We're pretty loose tonight here. We were supposed to come back five minutes ago or four minutes ago, but anyway.
Do you have a forum sitting here?
I think so, and he was just here. Did he go talk to somebody else?
I don't know.
Okay, all righty. All righty, so I'm gonna call the meeting back to order. And Madam Clerk, we're at the consent agenda, and I guess you have some things to pull, right?
Yep, there are items pulled, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
Do you want me to read the rest?
Please.
AM 2528, approval of change order number five for contract 2290PA with CRW Engineering Group to add $269,557 for right-of-way mapping services for the Texel Drive Extension Upgrade and Pathway Project. AM 2529, approval of contract amendment to contract 22063P with Moffett Nicole to extend the completion date to December 31st, 2027 for the design pile sleeve protection for Port McKenzie Project. AM 2530, award of bid number 2597P to Lounsbury and Associates in the contract amount of $174, $774,935 for Midway Street Improvements Construction Management Services. And AM 25034, authorization to enter into an agreement with EMC/MC to provide medical billing services for an annual anticipated amount of $150,000 for a period of up to five years with an annual cost increase of 10% based on actual billing revenue.
Okay, Deputy Mayor, will you move the...
I move to approve the consent agenda as read into the record by the Clerk.
Okay, is there any objection? See no objection, then the consent agenda as read has been approved, Madam Clerk.
AM 2531, award of bid number 25113B to BSI Equipment in the amount of $408,719.32 to purchase a front-loading compact truck. This was pulled by Assembly Member McKee.
Okay, Assemblyperson McKee, will you move the approval and then speak to it, please?
Yes, I move AM 25-031.
Okay, now go ahead and speak to it, why you wanted to pull it.
Yeah, there was, I used to sit on this assembly, and every time one of the, not every time, many times, when some big, huge number would come up, a guy named Moki would pull out of his pocket a thing that said, "I can get it for you wholesale," or whatever it was. It's like, yes! And I liked that because it was, you couldn't exactly argue with it, it was right there. And so, I called Moki and I asked his permission to mention that to you. And he said, "If you're only getting one bid on that big of a dollar amount, then something somewhere needs to change. Was the bid not attractive enough to attract people?" And I don't know anything about it, I've never made a bid in my life, well, except at auctions. But if you've got that much money on a piece of equipment, I think the, it ought to be more attractive to more people. By the way, I think the whole idea with the composting and all that, it's a great idea. But I'm just wondering, if you took $408,719.32 plus maintenance, plus labor, plus whatever, how long would, if ever, would it be that the taxpayers who are putting the bill on this ever get their money back, ever get, how long would it take to amortize something like that? So, is there some process where you could go back and say, "Jeez Louise, this didn't go real well, let's send it out and poof it up a little bit and make it better." I've never made a bid, but what about that?
Okay, I'll have, it looks like we have a couple staff people here, so if the Assembly doesn't have any objection, I will recognize the staff people to address Assemblyperson McKee's questions. Okay, go ahead, sir.
Through the Mayor, Tom Adams, Public Works Director here. I think it's gonna take both of us to answer this question. I just want to point out that the funds used to purchase this equipment were through the EPA grant that this body approved at two occasions here in recent meetings. I think it was the last meeting I was here at that actually, we accepted and appropriated the balance of the three-and-a-half million dollar grant, has zero match. So, I just want to put that on the table, that, you know, the funds used to acquire this were actually a 100% grant from the US EPA. I'll let Russ speak to the actual, the bid solicitation.
All right, Russ Kraft, Purchasing Director, through the Mayor. So, we use Bonfire to solicit this. When we post it on Bonfire, it's available worldwide through them, through all of their subscribers. We go in and we pick categories. There were invites sent out to 37 equipment suppliers for this. Twenty of those 37 downloaded the document and one of them submitted. Now, it is an expensive piece of equipment and it's grant money, but along with the grants come restrictions. A lot of the money that's coming out of the federal government right now has BABA requirements to it. A lot of people are familiar with build or buy American. BABA is one step up from that. It's even more restrictive in these EPA grants, all of this stuff that we're buying for this recycle and the composting, everything has to comply with BABA. So, that's one of the things, it's really all American-built and sourced, which is what's driving the cost of a lot of these up right now. But because of that, a lot of these companies from the lower 48 are looking at it and saying, they just cannot be competitive with some of the local suppliers. And BSI, who's, who got this bid, BSI gets the majority of this type of equipment bid anyway. They're local, they know the environment, and they know how to go ahead and submit a bid that complies with BABA.
Hmm, that's just puzzling to me. I mean, I appreciate your explanation, I'm fine with that. It's just curious to me that just one person thought it was a good idea. Shame on you, Christmas.
We can invite hundreds, but we can't force anybody to submit a bid. And a lot, a lot of these equipment suppliers, we see it with vehicles, with Ford, Chevy and everything else, they have this sometimes unwritten territory, and one bidder doesn't go into another bidder's territory.
Do you think that's what's happened here?
They kind of respect that.
Could that have happened here? I mean, would you know that, in any way, would you know that?
If I'm gonna buy a Ford vehicle, I can send it to all of the Ford dealerships in Anchorage, the Valley, and up in Fairbanks, and 90% of the bids that I get will come out of the local, the local dealerships here. They don't want to invade each other's territories.
Hmm, that's awful. Kinda ruins competition, doesn't it? Yeah, well, that puts me in an uncomfortable position because I'm such, try to be so frugal, but, you know, if it isn't gonna cost our taxpayers any money, and you're not getting any of the other bidders, and they're doing this territorial thing, jeez Louise, you can't beat that system.
It's a tough environment.
Otherwise, I would stay, I would hang with saying, "Guys, go back and give another shot at it, make it look prettier." But I don't think that would make a difference from what you've said. All right, you're on.
Did you have, Assemblyperson Sumner?
Yeah, I had some, just a couple of additional questions, actually, on it. I mean, this is a, if I'm correct, this is a tip-up truck, right? Grabs a dumpster, tips it, throws in the back of it, compacts it? Or is it just haul it and dump it on the tip-up floor? So, and then, so where are these dumpsters gonna be located that it's gonna be collecting and tipping?
Go ahead, sir.
Through the Mayor, Assemblymember Maxwell. It caught part of that, so, but I think I know where you're going on, though. All the activity, mostly, the majority of the composting is taking place at Central Landfill, so the equipment will be staged at Central Landfill and supporting the operations there. As I suggested when we accepted the last round of funding here, there are some improvements at several of the transfer sites, but this equipment won't be staged at those transfer sites.
All right, yeah, I'm just, when I read this, I was like, well, what's the heck is this thing doing? You know, because it's an expensive piece of equipment, but, so it's just gonna be picking up dumpsters that are at the Central Landfill, move them around?
Well, it's part, yeah, I mean, they'll be picking up the dumpsters, they'll be, it's kind of like a compactor itself, too, right? You got materials that get picked up, you know, thrown in the back, and it's got a compactor component to it.
Okay, yeah, that kind of answers my questions. Thanks.
Assemblyperson Farnum?
When we're looking at the, I guess, AM, it has a scope of work and it has really, really, a lot of details, and specifically even like the kind of engine type and things that, which is honestly not the greatest engine, if you operated the, you know, especially to work on them or when they get old. My question is, why was it very narrow down to specific brand names and things like that? And that would be the first one, then I'll continue, because, and it doesn't, and I don't see anywhere that what brand the truck is even in, it just has a lot of these other things, but, so when they, or maybe I don't have something in front of me, but when I look at it, is there a reason why there are specific requirements even on the engine type in the scope of work on this one? Because it seems like it really limits the competition to only certain dealership that will only provide the engine with that truck or that transmission. So, then five or six dealerships that we have here in Alaska are now, only one is really eligible to bid on it. That's, that's, that's what I, what I kind of see based on the scope, or is there, am I making sense, or is there a reason for that?
Through the Mayor, Assemblymember Farnum. So, it is, it's kind of a fine line when we write specifications, right? Because we have to provide enough definition so that we can be sure we're getting the same competitive bid that can, that's not comparing apples and oranges. But there's also an item in here where we want to make sure we don't create a fleet that has so much diversity in it, that, you know, maintaining that fleet, you know, we got one vendor, you know, for a certain piece of equipment or chassis, engine per se. So, it is, it is somewhat of a fine line that we run, that we know kind of what we want, but we're, we don't necessarily say exactly what manufacturer we want, because we need to, we need to make sure we get plenty of opportunity for others to, or to bid.
Okay, so, it sounds like this is a new program, there's money in it. What happens if we, we have a liberty of how we use that money, do we have to spend on a truck that will be parked at the Central Landfill? Or can we, we have, within this grant, we can use it differently to stretch it more wisely, maybe by something more versatile to move those containers, but also, so rather, or maybe use less of that money? Is there a specific reason why it had to be very narrow with a lot of these requirements for something that will be mostly parked at Central Landfill?
You know, the grant, obviously, there's many layers within the grant that are restrictive in what we have to do, but not to the degree that tells us what kind of equipment we have to purchase. It has to support the compost operations, does not tell us that we have to use a certain manufacturer. So, those elements are things that we control. You know, our solid waste division manager, who is going to run the compost operation, has evaluated what equipment he will need as we advance that program. So, in this case, you know, he's looked at a front-loading compactor as a necessary piece of equipment to support that operation.
And from what you answered to, Ms. Sumner, is you're saying, we're not gonna have like 10 different locations throughout the valley, and then, like, people dump their compost stuff and then that truck collects it. This is gonna be at the transfer station or at the main one? Am I understanding this correctly?
Correct, through the Mayor. So, the main operation will be at Central Landfill. But there are going to be some improvements at several different transfer sites that will collect materials that are deposited from the community at those remote areas, and that will be brought to Central Landfill so that the remaining balance of the composting activity can take place at Central Landfill. We're not gonna have desegregated operations at each of the transfer sites purely for composting.
Okay, and how far along we're in this program? And if we put brakes on this purchase right now, what does this do to the program currently?
Well, I mean, we already are kind of got an infant sort of composting program that's been ongoing throughout there. We're trying to make it a more robust system and which will need more equipment to, to develop. I'm not sure what, you know, if you're saying, if, you know, will we stop doing composting? We won't be able to advance the program without adding more equipment, let's just put it that way. But we have a small composting ready. For instance, if you go to Central Landfill, there's woody debris that's left over there, there's people that bring lawn clippings. We're already taking advantage of, in bringing those items together and starting to create some, we got a chipper out there, we're already creating a small volume of composting. With the grant program, we can enhance the volume that we're able to actually, you know, of the composting volume.
So, it wouldn't have been more wise to buy a front-end loader to collect it, to move, so we have more purpose in that? Because that's, that dumpster truck is very specific to containers and tipping and within it, because I looked up kind of what those are, those are pretty much similar trucks that pick up our garbage once this purchase, correct?
You know, if you want to visualize that, that'd be very similar, correct?
Yeah, okay.
Which we don't own, by the way.
Okay, it's just, I don't know how that kind of truck advances the purpose of helping the compost program. I maybe would love to hear more from the Director of how that justifies it, but just operating equipment, a little bit of experience I have, I just don't see how that specific piece of equipment advances that program. That's all I have.
Mr. Brown, you have a comment?
Yeah, so through the Mayor to the Assembly, I would suggest if this, I'm getting the sense the Assembly's uncomfortable with this approval, so vote it down. We'll go back, revisit the specs, and take another shot at it. It seems like there's enough here to warrant a revisit, in my opinion. I don't want you to feel like you're backed into a corner and that we're gonna try to pin you down until you say, until four of you say yes. That's not the intent. So, if you want us to revisit that, I don't have a problem with it. I don't think it's time-sensitive, where it's gonna cause an entire program to blow up over one equipment, or one equipment purchase. I can understand where we want to see more than one bidder. Now, that has nothing to do with the company that bid. I do think the BABA requirements are being, are restrictive, and we cannot change that. But we might be able to look at different types of equipment or different specifications, and that might yield a different result. And I think it's reasonable for administration of staff to take that on, if that's where you are, instead of trying to problem-solve it here at the dais tonight.
Okay, Assemblyperson Hale?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to say that, you know, we have accepted and appropriated this money specifically to expand this program, advance this program. And, you know, when it comes down to the award of bid, this, that's not the time to start questions, you know what I mean? We have, we should have been questioning this when we were accepting and appropriating the money. Now, they're telling us that this is the, this is the, we are going to, you know, purchase this piece of equipment that we have already basically agreed that we need, and this is the price that we're getting from it, for it, out of the fair market. And I think this is just the inappropriate time to be, to be bringing these things up.
Assemblyperson Sumner?
Oh, yeah, I was just gonna mention that, you know, Ms. McKee's and Mr. Farnum's comments that, you know, this is a, I feel like this is a, reiterate their comments, basically, I mean, looking, what I thought was first the spec sheet is actually the requirement sheet. It's highly, highly detailed, and I think that I can see why this would limit people from bidding on, on this item when you had such a detailed requirements. You know, I mean, there's a tailgate drip pan, spill kit, spill kit on rub tail curbside center, throttle advance control. I mean, knowing what I know about heavy trucks and equipment, this is really, really detailed. You know, it's not just a tip-up truck, it's a really specific tip-up truck, I guess, unless someone has other comments on that. I mean, I would, I would think that you would get more bids if you had less detail on your requirements.
Assemblyperson Hirsch?
Um, I don't really have a problem going back out to bid, but in addition to being time-sensitive, do we have the money in the bank? Like, this isn't gonna be, part of the grant funding is just gonna disappear on us? Do we, is it already been given to an account that the borough manages?
I was looking back from my phone or friend. Through the Mayor, Assemblyperson Hirsch, I mean, it's been accepted and appropriated, so from the perspective of the money is been awarded, accepted, you know, having physically funds deposited into the borough's account, I can't tell you exactly how that process necessarily works.
Through the...
Mr. Brown, go ahead.
Sorry, Mayor. I saw you look, but, so through the Mayor to the Assembly, we have a grant agreement, or we wouldn't have brought the accept and appropriate forward. Most, if not really, the vast majority of grants are done on a reimbursable basis, but once you have the grant agreement, you have the commitment that those grant funds will be reimbursed, providing you follow the requirements of the grant. So, I don't think that's questionable at this time.
I guess my only other question would be, are those specificities that are being mentioned, are those the BABA requirements, or are those additional things that, are they either BABA requirements or requirements we put on because we want to standardize? Or are some of them outside of that?
You know, I think it's not, it's not a BABA thing. I mean, what it comes down to, and, not that I'm... I mean, what it comes down to and, and not that I'm pointing to Russ, but I mean, we've had this battle, you know, in, in recent conversations when we're trying to specify equipment. It goes back to the same thing, that we need to make it specific enough to make sure that when we get the bid, it's actually the equipment that we want. Right? And so if you, if you leave too much lack in specificity, you potentially get a low bidder, but you got a piece of equipment that doesn't serve your purpose. And, and, you know, so it is, it is kind of a line that we're walking, you know? If we could say we want, uh, X brand, you know, yada, yada, yada. Russ prefers we not do that. And if I miss vote, tell me so. And so we do, we do probably tend to overspecify for that reason. You know, I'll just add, you know, you guys have heard Jeff Smith, our division manager before you, the guy really knows how to run the landfill operation. So when it comes down to running a program like the compost program, like, you know, I really lean on my division managers to understand what that, what that's going to take. So I have a high level of confidence in him and, uh, you know, depending on how you feel about that, I guess you'll have to decide how to vote this piece of equipment up or down. And I would add to the managers, time sensitivity, it's not there. I mean, it's just a program, you know, we got the three and a half million dollars there recently. You know, if it takes another six months for us to move along in that direction, then it takes another six months. But I, I guess I would, I would suggest that I am apprehensive that putting it back out to bid is going to end up in a different result.
Assemblyperson Gamble?
It's for Russ. Hey Russ, on these specs, you know, because you and I have done many, many, many fire trucks together. And this looks much like a lot of the fire trucks that we've, we've put out to bid. And these companies are free to, um, bid alternatives to like the, the engine transmission as long as it's as good or, or better than what's on the spec sheet, correct?
Correct, that's the important thing right there is when, when these are, are specked out, we're establishing the minimum quality that would be acceptable. So somebody is free to bid, say, their brand, as long as it is, is an equal or better. Um, they're also able to bid and they could list out, our vehicle meets everything except. Now they're taking a risk because we have the ability, if it's a, we don't meet this particular spec, to reject the bid. Or we can look at it, take it under consideration and say, it's a minor informality. It still meets the intent of the bid and therefore we can move forward with the award. So they are, they are prescriptive, but we have to give them something to establish a baseline of what we're looking for.
Right. So that's what. And I know in the past, we've even had companies, um, contact us through the process and tell us that our bid doesn't work, that we haven't put things together right, that things are not compatible and we've had to go back and, and fix bid. So, um, I don't see this, um, detailed scope of work or, or equipment list here any different than any fire truck that we've ever bid here in the Matsui boroughs. So I would support this, thank you.
Assemblyperson Hale?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to say, I'm actually reassured by the specificity in the bid. When you're going to spend a half a million dollars on a piece of iron, you want to make sure that it does the job that you're buying it to do.
Assemblyperson McKee?
Max was talking about the number of people that wouldn't even look at a bid like this because they say, yeah, maybe I can't do all of that stuff. But you could maybe do something that would suffice. In other words, you may not need a Cadillac when you could, you know, or a Ferrari when you could do a Cadillac kind of a thing. When I was a long time ago, uh, working with the EO and they said, we want, and we want a very specific kind of a worker. I found them a American Indian, overweight, female. I can't remember even what the other thing was, but I said, dear God, is there anybody else on the planet like this? Well, there probably wasn't, but it didn't need to be that specific because it turns out she wasn't any good and we had to let her go anyway. So I guess what I'm seeing is, I don't like supporting this territorial bidder thing. I hate that, just that my vote yes on this says, okay, you guys, you, you got your little racket going and I'm going to support it. I don't. And if it were only that, I wouldn't, I couldn't vote for it. But there's got to be a better way, there's got to be some way to put it out there where it's a little prettier to a few more people. So I'm glad that it's not, you know, our borough taxpayers doing it, but the money comes from ultimately the same place. It's all green.
Okay, let's see, who has, Assemblyperson Farnah, go ahead.
Quick question, um, this kind of grant, is a requirement for the equipment to be brand new? Because we're talking right now about truck that will most stand, or, or, or there isn't requirement for it brand new? It's a legitimate question.
Through the mayor, um, some member phoned off. I don't recall, I read the grant agreement front and back, uh, but I don't ever require or recall seeing it talk about new versus used equipment. In fact, you know, the only thing it says is when you do buy equipment, it has to follow, you know, certain items like, you know, the Baba. So it does, it doesn't even tell us exactly that we have to buy equipment. You know, it's three and a half million dollars to develop a compost program.
Okay, I, the reason I say is because of how you explained and what it's going to be used for. I think maybe we can stretch that money further. So I, that's, I'm also hesitant to, to vote for it. So, but thank you for answering that, thank you for the question.
Any further discussion, are we ready? Does anybody have an objection to, at passing? Okay, we do have an objection. Okay, so.
Members can go ahead and vote. It passes with Assemblymember Farnah, Bernier and McKee opposed.
Okay.
Get this real quick.
Sure, go ahead.
AM twenty-five thirty-two, word of bid number twenty-one, one twenty-six B to Pacific Power Group in the amount of a hundred and one thousand nine hundred and fifty-five dollars to provide annual generator testing and maintenance services is pulled by Assemblymember Sumner.
All right, go ahead, sir.
Yeah, I move AM twenty-five dash zero three two.
Okay, do you want to speak to it, sir?
Yeah, I just have a, probably a pretty simple question. So I see, you know, the scope of work that are testing and firing all these generators. And then I see that, you know, uh, they have a, they specify the per hour rate for additional work. But what about parts? Do they have a guarantee that there's, I mean, I imagine if you have to get replacement parts outside of their scope of work, it would probably fall under the, under the threshold of having to get multiple bids. But are they like a single source or are you paying for parts separately? Are they marking up those parts? That's the question I have.
Go ahead, sir.
Through the mayor, some member Maxwell. Boy, I'm going to be challenged to answer this one. This is kind of repetitive program that we've had, we've had for years, having an annual maintenance contract. But I would speculate that the parts are in addition to the, the service contract. There might be certain items that are included, uh, as part of that. But there are certainly occasions when parts might be outside of this bid and they would present those to us uh, for an opportunity to, uh, um, decide whether or not to, to do a change order within the context of the contract or simply procure those parts separately.
Yeah, so maybe, maybe I can explain a little bit better. So like, if you hire, uh, a plumber to come and service your furnace and he cleans it out and tests the igniter's and the burners and everything. He says, oh, hey, you know what? Your igniter's going out. I'm gonna, you know, I can go ahead and change his igniter out for you. My rate is a hundred and eighty-five dollars because that's what their rate is. But the igniter's nine hundred dollars. Well, you know, you can get that igniter for a hundred bucks on Amazon, right? So he's marking up that igniter by ninefold. Is there any of that going on? Or how do we know what we're paying for parts that are needed outside of the scope of the, of the contract?
Let's put it the other way, I mean, we don't know when we put up these contracts, what type of equipment we are absolutely need every time we need to service a generator. So I think it would be difficult for us to actually put those in there. Um, so I would go back to what I said, I think there's an occasion where in things like that, they would present to you, you know, here, you need this additional piece of equipment replaced. Here's the cost for me to go do that. And then we would have the opportunity to say, okay, that's fine. We'll have you do that as an additional cost to the contract. Or we would have the option to negotiate or just, uh, deny them that opportunity and we would go procure the materials. You know, we do have staff that are capable of servicing, um, these, but you know, we don't have the resources to take care of our nearly fifty generators across the borough on an annual basis. So that's why my understanding is we are doing this annual contract. I, I hope I answered that. I think there, there, there's some costs outside of this that may be incurred or, uh, components of a generator that might show up in an annual maintenance that would be additional cost.
Yeah, I think that answers my questions. You know, basically you have staff that are qualified that are looking at these additional costs if it, if it goes beyond the scope of work.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
Okay, can you put this in perspective? How many generators are we talking for a hundred thousand?
So currently we have forty-one generators across the borough and we're installing five more, uh, currently. So we'll, at the end of this season, we'll have just under fifty generators that we, that are part of this maintenance contract.
A total of what?
Forty-six.
So two grand a piece for maintenance? And how many hours do, on an average, would you get in a year?
I don't have that information for you.
The only time power goes out, right?
Well, we have annual maintenance, I mean, this is preventative maintenance. So, I mean, they're, they're, they're taking a peek at our generators even when we don't have problems with them so that we hopefully don't have problems with them when we need them.
Right, but when you need them is because the power goes out?
Correct.
Okay, just perspective, I've got two eighty thousand K dub generators that I picked up at Richie Brothers Auction. They're both John Deere Motors. I paid thirty-five hundred dollars a piece for them. And I run my concrete grinding equipment with it, three phase, two twenty power. Oil change and an air filter. And I run, I put hours on mine because I'm running, you know, fifty, sixty hours a week versus somebody that's got a power outage and has an emergency generator. And it's going to get maybe ten hours a year to twenty hours a year at most? I'm guessing.
Is that a question?
It seems a little steep to me.
Assemblyperson Hale? Okay. Assemblyperson Gamble?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I know that, uh, those generators run more than just when the power's out. They're, they have, all of them have load banks and they run for two hours, one day out of the week, every week to be tested, just in case there's an emergency. And I know at least the fire stations are emergency shelters, so they need to make sure that those generators are in tip top, ready to go shape if there is an emergency. Thank you.
Assemblyperson Hale?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll just add to that, it's, uh, at the, at the rate quoted, it's, uh, about ten hours of maintenance on each generator for the whole year. I don't think that's excessive.
Further discussion? Do we have objection to the adoption? No, I don't see any objection, is that right? No objection? Okay, so then, um, AM, um, twenty-five dash zero three two has passed. Madam Clover?
AM twenty-five thirty-three, approval of change order number two for contract twenty-five thirty-three C with Fargo USA Land to add, excuse me, is that Fugro, sorry, USA Land to add an annual cost a hundred and fifty thousand for the pavement assessment and analysis and requesting extension of the, of completion to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-seven, pulled by Assemblymember Sumner.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
I move AM twenty-five dash zero three three. So my question, I guess I'm just trying to under, understand this one. I mean, this happened before I joined the assembly, but it's, um, we entered a contract in August twenty-three, twenty twenty-four to assess our pavement condition and make an inventory of like signage, lightage and guardrails. And it was supposed to be done by June thirtieth of twenty twenty-five. But this change order adds two more years to that. So, I mean, do they need all that time to inventory this stuff? Because it seems like by the time you get this in twenty twenty-seven, it's going to be kind of stale. Some of the pavement's going to be in worse shape than what it was in right now, twenty twenty-five. And also do we have, do we not have any inventory of our guardrails, lightage and signage already? Or, or not?
So through the mayor, Assemblymember Sumner. I'll concede, I mean, the original, when we first brought this contract forward for Fugro, we should have brought it forward as an annual program. That was the intent and, and Public Works failed to get that. It was a, uh, program that was only approved initially for the one-year contract. We achieved that this past year, we, as I am, uh, identified, we, we achieved about a hundred and eighty miles, a hundred and seventy-nine, I think it was, um, of paved roadways that were assessed by Fugro. Uh, we have somewhere in the order of seven hundred paved miles across the borough. And so our program seeks to do this, uh, every year so that we get all paved roadways assessed in that three-year period. And you're correct, you know, in my vision, this is something that we do annually. Once we're done with three years, we're probably taking a peek and looking at that first set of projects we did or road miles that we did in the first year and, and revisiting that. This is very similar to the paving assessment that DOT does across their highway road miles. You know, I could go into the, you know, I don't think you need it, but I mean, the, the reasons why I feel very excited about the program we're implementing with this Fugro project. And, you know, and here before too long, I hope to bring the results of that back to this body so you can see how we're using that information. Um, as we create our asset management plan across the borough for transportation, I would say our paved roadways are some of our most costly or most, uh, highly valued of, of the assessed improvements. So, and to answer your question, we kind of got a side benefit out of this Fugro of the pavement assessment where they could do side scans and pick up where our guardrails at. We've been trying to, in the past few years, send folks out using our, uh, survey one, two, three app and picking up signage, picking up guardrails. Um, the, the shorter answer is no, we don't have that, uh, fully, um, data, data collection fully completed yet for, in our, in our cartograph, our asset management program. So we see this as a, as a tool to help us move in that direction. Um, so that ultimately, you know, at least on our paved roadways, we will have that additional data, uh, collected.
Go ahead, sir, follow up?
Yeah, so this, this is before my time on the assembly, so maybe you could, real, you guys have probably already heard this. Could you, uh, like in a nutshell, kind of tell me what the value proposition is? I think you already touched on it, to spending this hundred and fifty thousand a year, uh, for this.
So our first year, our first year is a little more costly because we have some implementation costs that went along with that. Um, Fugro is a, is a national group, you know, like I said, they're under contract to DOT. We're getting benefit, benefit out of them that we don't have to pay the mobilization cost. So there, there was, it actually took a, uh, I think it took a waiver, um, to procure Fugro because we're piggybacking off of DOT's, uh, contract with them. So, but it is going to be an annual cost of about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So we're in order to, if there, if there's nothing beyond the third year, we'll have to reevaluate that. But what we're trying to do is make sure we collect at least once all our paved miles. And that's going to take at least the next couple of years to do. And then the cost, you know, relevant to what we looked at this past year, we, we're looking at somewhere between a hundred and seventy-five, maybe two hundred miles per season. And the cost of doing that for the next couple of years is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year.
Hello, go ahead.
Yeah, but my, my question is, is how do the taxpayers get a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of, of value out of that? Is it deferred maintenance? Is it increasing the lifespan of the pavement? Is it, I mean, all the above? Is it, is it?
Understood and apologize for not answering the question originally. So you're, it is all the above. Right now, I mean, to be honest with you, when we look at what projects do we put on rip lists, tip lists for paved roadways? You know, it's a few folks that get around a table and, and say, hey, how was your drive into town today? You know, what roads are, are, you know, were in pretty bad shape? I mean, there's a little bit of visual, you know, visualness that can go along with that evaluation. But what this, what this program does is, and I can get too geeky on this, I'll just leave it basic. You know, it gives us an IRI value that, you know, we can look at, go, okay, this, this segment of paved roadway is beyond preventative maintenance. It, it, it is in the reconstruct or rehab category. Don't worry about trying to maintain it. And, you know, but this, you know, certain collection of road miles along across the borough will gain benefit by actually doing maintenance to it, you know, crack ceiling, there's a number of, you know, uh, items in our toolkit that will fit in that category. Those are the ones that we're really trying to look at so that we extend the life of that paving. Because anytime you have to actually pull up pavement and reconstruct roadways, that's, that's the expensive projects. So we're trying to extend those costs deeper into the future. And then of course we'll identify those projects are in good shape, you know, and we can identify, there, there's actually a curve that we can develop that will show, you know, it's good for the next five years, but we start planning for that maintenance five, seven, 10 years from now. So we can actually have a planning tool that, uh, allows us to program those funds and not all of a sudden go, man, I need three million dollars for a project I didn't know about, but I could have known about three years ago.
Thank you, that answers my questions.
Assemblyperson Hale?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. So there was a really nasty rainstorm, uh, this last winter and a good portion of the Butte area was pretty heavily. Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. So there was a really nasty rainstorm this last winter and a good portion of the Butte area was pretty heavily affected by it. And there's a lot of, there's a lot of damaged pavement over there right now, particularly in like the Three Sisters, Brimar area, up around Maude. Maude Road has been torn up pretty bad, but that's the state, of course. So maybe you can get those guys to go out there and, and take a look at that stuff.
Assemblyperson Nowers?
I can't top that. Though, I, I really appreciate this because when you talked about it before, it, it seems like an attempt to bring a real asset management plan to our roads and to be able to extend the life of some of them, hopefully, before they get to the point where we have to do a full repair, which is so expensive. And that saves taxpayer dollars and, and, and you can always drive through District 2, 2 on your way to the Butte. I'm sure there's a few roads there.
Mr. Brown?
Yeah, so through the mayor to the Assembly, one of the very practical pieces is we've been talking about what's the next Transportation Systems ballot measure, right? So staff are then charged if the Assembly's like, yep, go bring us something. One of the things we've talked about is a larger-scale pavement preservation measure. And I can tell you how it would go down right now. They would sit around a table and go, these are the roads we should do, and then we're going to bring it to the Assembly and you're going to sit around and go, I want to fix whatever roads you just mentioned, and you're going to fix whatever roads you just mentioned. I would prefer it be a little more data-driven than that. And so having a program that can assess that and actually inform the conversation in a more holistic way, to me, makes a lot more sense and it's a lot more defensible to the public. We just don't have that data today. And it is developing an asset management program. Hopefully, we won't be driving the same miles every couple of years. I don't think pavement changes that much. But right now, we don't have that done holistically, and I'm not comfortable bringing forward recommendations for millions of dollars of investments on pavement preservation when it, a little bit of it does feel like an, an informed guess. Like, I would prefer it to be a data-driven event. And, and it would make it a lot easier up here as you're trying to figure out why District 2 trumps District 4 or vice versa. And so I think that's the practical component. If people are like, why do you spend that money? Like, I know $150,000 is a lot of money, but we're talking about over 700 road miles of pavement. That is not a small asset. It is literally millions and millions of dollars. And so I think we can do a little bit better job having a program around that. So I, I just want to get very practical about, well, why should we do this? I think that's the practical piece because in the next year, we're going to have to start having those conversations because we have to do that work to bring you something to consider. And this will at least be more information than we have currently if we continue the program.
Deputy Mayor?
Well, if you had five on RSA, you could put two in a truck and they could drive those paved roads.
Yeah, so to be clear, this is not an individual eyeballing a road. This is a specialized piece of equipment they bring up from the Lower 48 that actually does an analysis. I mean, I, when I first saw the truck, I was like, oh, this is like Google Streets on steroids. Like, it's got a lot of technical equipment that, that allows you actually scan the pavement and do actual assessments. I mean, I can go eyeball a road and say, there's a lot of crack seal here. I mean, we can do, that's what we've been doing. We can, we, but then how do you determine that your road's got more crack seal than his road? I mean, that's kind of the, the challenge, right? And so, and it, it would inform us coming back to you and telling you, this is what this is going to cost us to maintain over time. And I have a feeling we're going to get a little sticker shock. But facts are facts.
Did you have something else, Assemblyperson? No, okay. All righty, any, any objection to the motion to approve AM 25-033? Okay, hearing no objection, then it has been adopted. And now I guess we're to unfinished business.
Yep. Ordinance 2517 and ordinance amending MSB 525 service areas to provide for a five-member Board of Supervisors for the road service areas in Caswell Lakes, Greater Willow, Meadow Lakes, Gold Trail, Greater Talkeetna, and Trapper Creek.
Okay, we do have a motion on the floor. And a discussion or amendments, anything? Deputy Mayor? Or did you have comment? Discussion by any of the Assembly?
Okay. I believe Dimitri's got an amendment he'd like to bring forward.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so if I may, so basically, I'll say, so we heard a lot of testimony, but in regards to this, and in order for this to change things just more smoothly, we, I've identified the areas that we have enough applicants that also in my and Mr. Bernier's areas, there were, the boards is willing and able to, based on interest, to expand. But those are the, not interest, I want to exclude them. So I'm going to make an amendment. And I move to amend ordinance 25017 and I am 25035 by striking in reference to Caswell RSA, Greater Willow RSA, Greater Talkeetna RSA, and Trapper Creek RSA. This amendment would leave Meadow Lakes RSA and Gold Trail RSAs going to five-member board. Meadow Lakes, and, and that's it. And I think Lonnie has the copy of this, except it's, it leaves the two of the RSA, which is the Meadow Lakes and the Gold Trail.
Okay. Further discussion on the amendment only? Deputy Mayor?
I have current, currently, there's two applicants for RSA 27. That was in front of Lonnie?
I, I, I'd have to look, but I think that we probably have about three. And one came this afternoon, a little bit after 5:00. I was given an application here about 15, maybe a half hour ago. But the clerk's office hasn't given me the information of where that applicant lives and where they're registered to vote. So I don't know for sure which one of the road service areas they're in. So, yeah.
Just saying that we do have enough applicants for the five-member board, plus I think there's another eight of them in 27?
Yeah.
But, and then there's.
Well, we could look, let's see, if somebody can pull up the vacancy report, we can see. Well, the one at 5:00 today didn't, and then this one we just got a half hour ago. I don't know where they're from. But I think there's three or four more, maybe more.
I just wanted to add, the, the ones we're talking about, the two RSAs that will be affected, those are the ones that have high amount of applicants, which would be enough to get them going. And I don't think today is the, you're not making those appointments today. We're not making decision on that specific today. So today, we're just, with this amendment, they're only affect these two RSAs.
What I thought if they, but we did, oh, so we'd have to go back to next, last time because we did appoint somebody to 27, which filled that board. So I'm sorry about that. You're right. That wouldn't be on tonight's vacancies. Thank you. But, and then, Assemblyperson Sumner?
Yeah, my, I guess I want some clarification of which RSAs have applicants? Is it just the two that are left in the amendment, or is it more?
We're, we're trying to determine that now. I know as of last, we, our last assembly meeting, when we made the third appointment to Meadow Lakes, at that time, that person was selected out of, I think, at least three other applicants. But then, of course, what would happen is to those applicants, it would, there would have been a letter saying, you know, somebody else has been appointed. But then tonight, about five minutes after 5:00, we did get another applicant for 27, which currently there is no vacancy. And then this one that we just got a half hour ago, Jamie has to verify what road service area they're in, and if they're a registered voter, et cetera, et cetera, before we can, I can plug them in someplace. So, anyway. Okay, and I don't know that we've, I'm sorry, go ahead, Madam Clerk.
As of right now, I know we have at least five applications for RSA 27.
Okay, but, and I don't think we have any additional ones for Gold Trail, do we?
I can look up this gentleman's address, and I can't guarantee you that's where he's registered to vote, but I can look up the address.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so further discussion on the amendment?
I was just gonna say, I have more applicants up north that are interested in applying but did not want to put their name in the hat until this went through.
Okay.
Just because it was a small, they're business owners and they don't want it to affect their business.
Okay, all right, that's fine. Further discussion on the amendment?
I have a question. I kind of lost the big picture here. What, does this, does this amendment stand as, I mean, are we voting on this amendment as it, okay. All right.
Yeah, so the discussion now in the, in the voting is going to be on that amendment. Okay. Assembly, do we have, do we have objection to the amendment? We do. Or more discussion? Okay.
Yeah, I was, I was curious what Assemblymember Bernier's position is on this amendment.
Okay.
I am full supportive of it, and after this is done and this works out, I think this should be, go as a good example to the rest of them. You know, I know of another five-member board, four, four of them wanted to renew the contract, or not to renew the contract and put it back out to bid. One guy didn't, and apparently that created a lot of conflict. And from what I understand, that's why it's in shambles right now.
Okay, the clerk can correct me if I'm wrong, but if this amendment passes, then when, when you do the final vote on 25-017, it will have removed everything but those two. Everybody understands that? Okay, okay, all right. Is in, is, and we do have an objection to the amendment. So Madam Clerk?
If I can get the members to go ahead and vote. It is passed with Assemblymember Hale and Gamble opposed.
Okay, so now you have before us ordinance 25-017 as amended. Discussion on that. Assemblyperson Gamble?
Yeah, I'd like to go on the record to say that this ordinance does not just affect District 7, that it affects District 5 and District 4. And I was never called or consulted about changing the RSA board numbers at all. And there's a good portion of RSA 27 that's within my district. And so I, I don't like this ordinance, and I think it should be voted down. The Meadow Lakes Board, RSA Board doesn't want it. No other board in the borough wants five-member boards. So I'm opposed to it, and I don't appreciate an ordinance being brought forward that affects my district without being consulted. Thank you.
Okay, Deputy Mayor?
What, what part of RSA 27 is in Big Lake?
Johnson Road, all the way over to Vine, or maybe Max's, may have a little of Vine, but at least over to Sylvan. And almost all the way up to Hollywood on Johnson Road is all in RSA 27.
That's District 7?
That's District 5, too. If you, if you look from Hollywood down towards Johnson Road, towards the Parks Highway, you'll see where District 5 is part of RSA 27. And if you look east, you'll see where RSA 27 is in District 4 as well. Assembly Sumner and I, Assemblyperson Sumner and I looked at the map. It affects both of our districts, and you did this without talking to us.
Okay, Assemblyperson Nowers, go ahead. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Assemblymember.
Thanks, Tim. You know, we've had, what, three, four meetings on this? I have not heard a clamor from people who have said that they have been disenfranchised by the current board, that they really want to serve on it. I've heard a lot of opposition, and I've also just seen evidence, including what we had tonight, that the five-member board didn't work. It blew up an entire board, and now you have to piece that back together. So just given the, the testimony that we've, we've gotten on this and the evidence before us on the other five-member board, I can't support this.
Assemblyperson Hale, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just, I have the same objections I had when we were talking about expanding the, the, the boards for Big Lake and, I think, Knick. I think it was Knick, and Knick is the one that we just took from a five-member board back to a three-member board. I had the same, I had the same objections. This is not a, it's not a problem that needs solving. It's a bad precedent to set. It's difficult to, it's difficult to recruit members. It's difficult for members to meet core requirements. It just, it's a solution, and it's a solution in search of a problem. So I'm going to oppose this. Thank you.
Further discussion on ordinance 25-017 as amended. And I hear some objection. Oh, Assemblyperson McKee, go ahead.
Yep, no, is, does Meadow Lakes want this? I mean, it's got to be what the people want. But I was under the impression with, with this amendment, that the two that we would be leaving in are people who want a five-member board. Am I wrong?
Well, we do, in, in the RSA 27, we did have additional people that applied. So I would assume at least those people, even though we haven't heard from them, would be interested in it.
Okay, so the RSA 27 is who? What, what's the name of that Meadow Lakes? So I think, okay, so Meadow Lakes ought to have what they want. And the other one is?
Gold Trail.
Gold Trail, and they want, we know that they want it? I like it with the amendment, then.
Assemblyperson Sumner, and then?
Yeah, I would just like to point out that we should not make the folly of thinking that RSA boards, you know, are the people, you know, they aren't, they are not elected. So what they want or do not want may not actually reflect what's in the best interest of the community at large. So that's why I would, you know, I am conflicted on this one as well. I am interested to see how it turns out, and I would be supportive of it, you know? Because the only negative testimony we have received that I have seen has been from community councils and RSA boards.
Okay, Assemblyperson Gamble, and then Fana?
Yeah, as far as Meadow Lakes RSA goes, the chairman, Mr. Edwards, got up and spoke earlier tonight and spoke opposed to it, as well as every other RSA board and the big RSA board are all opposed to this ordinance.
Assemblyperson Fana?
Well, the reality is the RSA boards themselves might not like it because there's going to be possibly changes and and as elected officials, I think we have sometimes make uncomfortable decisions to make those uncomfortable changes. However, the issue when on our says, since they don't align with our district maps, then it puts one RSA that might affect three different, so I think it'd be, I think it's reasonable to see which district it affects the most or who has the most miles. And it's very obvious that the 27 is overwhelmingly in District 7, and like a 28 is split, and that's why I'm saying the 28 based on having enough applicants, and, and it's also, I don't think that 28 affects anybody except 7 and 6. So I do think this one will, we'll give it a try on these two. We have plenty of applicants and see how it goes. And then if there's more interest in, after this, maybe because this brought up a lot of tension, I think. And maybe it shows that, and based on applications that have been submitted, there is interest there to serve. So I'd like to see this changed. Thank you.
Further discussion, yes, Deputy Mayor?
One year into my seat here, I got a phone call from a neighbor off of Captain Hook. Captain Hook was built, it's a road, it's supposed to be a loop, built in 1970, goes through a swamp, 1971, the middle of it fell out, and has been two roads ever since. Our RSA was going to spend $1.3 million to connect, reconnect that road. Even though it went through a swamp, there was no usable land to get as a tax base to pay for the road or anything. And then I got neighbors calling up, hey, And then I got neighbors calling up, hey, the borough's out here with stakes and stuff and doing ditches or, you know, and we met with Cole, and he came out and a couple other people, and it's like, nobody even asked the people that lived on the road if they wanted anything. Now that's, you know, that type of communication, I think if you had a five-member board, you actually would have a little more communication. And so anyways, the people didn't want it. I don't know how much, how many thousands of dollars they spent on design or anything like that, but I know overall it was 1.3 million that was going to get spent on a, a trail, a goat trail, basically going through a swamp, that would have not brought the borough any income to pay for it.
Okay, Assemblyperson Hale.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. So all of the community councils and all of the RSA boards that have sent us any information, any opinion on this, have said that they are not interested, so in answer to that question. And I think that we have already experimented with this, and we have seen the results, and the results are not an improvement in RSA boards. I mean, we have these advisory boards, they're there for a reason, they're supposed to give us advice, you know, we should listen to them. And, and when they are dysfunctional, when they can't meet quorum obligations, and people quit in frustration, they're not doing the job that, that the assembly needs them to do, which is to advise us.
Okay, Assemblyperson Nowers, and then McKee.
The result of that experiment in Knick was now there is no representation for anybody on that board, and all that experience is gone. So you've gone from a situation where you had a functioning board to no representation for that area, so, and I would be more convinced if we had people coming in here and saying, I'm, I'm going to the board, like if they're not happy with the board's decisions, they can go to the meetings and lobby the board. And if they came in here and said, I've spent the past six months trying to lobby that board, and they won't listen to me, you know, and, and here's the issue, but we don't have any clamor, like that comes back to the problem that we're trying to, to solve. So I just, I haven't heard anything that tells me that they're having a problem with the existing board, at least that's in the public record. And all the testimony has been against from multiple boards, and, yeah, so it's just really hard for me to support this.
Assemblyperson McKee? Your light is on. Did you want to talk?
It is, but I think I got to think about this a little bit more, because I was thinking sometimes you just got to roll the dice and see if it works. Well, maybe we've already rolled the dice with the, however, I wouldn't compare any of the other RSAs to, let's say, Big Lake, because that's been contentious like forever. So I'd kind of take them out of the equation. Um, maybe this could be approached in a more affirmative manner, saying, okay, we want to hear from the people in Meadow Lakes and Gold Trail somehow or another. I kind of equate it with the, with the Knick thing where the helicopter thing was, and the council out there said, absolutely, this is the direction we want to go, and then a whole bunch of people showed up and said, no, it's not. So here, is that kind of same thing maybe happening, where the, where the RSA boards are saying, we don't want it, but yet we have all these, and that's kind of a bunch of people to get as applicants, coming in and saying, yeah, we'd like to give this a shot. So what would it cost us to roll the dice on that? And just say, okay, we'll take this with the amendment, and then the only affirmative ones that are going forward are Meadow Lakes and Gold Trail, or Gold, whatever that is. And just, do we lose any money if we, if we vote for this? And it doesn't obligate anybody to anything, kind of like?
I don't think there's any money that's, there's, there's no fiscal note to just change or anything, so, yeah, so.
Well, maybe roll the dice.
All right. Assemblyperson Fono.
I want to, before, before we make a decision, the overwhelming majority of the opposition that we heard were from Caswell, Greater Willow, Talkeetna, and Trapper Creek. Those have been now removed with amendment adopted. We're only asking to make the change for two that have almost a stack full of applicants and interest, nothing else. So I think it's a reasonable request. The Knick example is a bad example because Assemblymember at that time changed the districts who represented that, changed the both, and obviously one died, the other one actually took a very thriving, you know, direction, which, you know, it's a whole different conversation. But, but these people who have applied, some of them who I've talked to, and those are in there, specific in Gold Trail, there are people that just actually want to work together, and I do, would like to support those in, in those things because they affect me and Mr. Bernier's district overwhelmingly.
Okay, we, I know we do have objections, so Madam Clerk.
And the members in the room can go ahead and vote on the main motion.
Yeah, we're on the main motion.
Because the button got pushed accidentally, I'm assuming, so now we're going to have to re-vote. If I can get the members in the room to go ahead and, and vote again. No, she's good. Well, maybe. There we go. Madam Mayor, it passed with Assemblymember Hale, Gamble, and Nowers opposed.
Okay. So, Madam Clerk, when you're done, there are no details, and the next item, Madam Clerk.
Introduction for public hearing on April 15th is ordinance 2540 with accompanying resolution 2532, ordinance 2541 with accompanying resolution 2533, ordinance 2549 with accompanying resolution 2537, ordinance 25051, and ordinance 25052.
Deputy Mayor.
I move to introduce the legislation as read into the record by the clerk, and the public hearing, set the public hearings for April 15th, 2025.
Discussion. Is there any objection? Somebody has, oh, that's, stole the deputy mayor. Okay. Hearing done, the legislation has been introduced. Next item is the vacancy report. Deputy Mayor.
I move to approve mayor's recommendation as follows. Library Citizens Advisory Committee, resignation of Dorothy Denson. Transportation Advisory Board, Timothy Alley. Bogart RSA number 25, resignation of Gary Hesmer. Lazy Mountain RSA number 19, resignation of Robert Stone.
Okay. Discussion. Any objection? Hearing no objection, and the vacancy report has been approved. There is no new business. We do have a referral. Madam Clerk.
Ordinance 2550, and ordinance modifying the intent, notification, and appeal process for MSB 1705, Essential Service Utilities.
Okay, Assemblyperson Hale.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to refer ordinance 25-050 to the planning commission for 90 days.
Okay, is there any discussion? Is there any objection? Okay, hearing no objection, and the legislation has been referred. There is no reconsiderations. We're now to parting comments. Mr. Attorney, parting comments? No. Assemblyperson McKee, parting comments? No. Deputy Mayor, parting comments?
Thank you, everyone, for coming out. I know it was a little rough there on the five-member versus three-member, but I, I believe with a lot of communication is going to pay dividends. You know, when I ask people, I says, would you be interested in having a say on where your tax money goes on our roads? I had over, you know, a lot of people, hey, yeah, you know? So that's where all that was coming from, as far as the applicants go. And other than that, I want to thank the Lord. Please bless our valley, bless our leaders, help our first responders. We pray for our military. We pray for the people that are in need, people fires and sick and addicted and all kinds of different things, the traumas that from childhood. Anything, Lord, that you can help us with, we ask and pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Assemblyperson Hale, parting comments?
No comment. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Assemblyperson Nowers, parting comments?
Maybe your April Fool's joke we should have done, speak one time.
Yeah, that's right. See, we would have been out of here two hours ago.
I just wanted to say something about the communications improvement report that the manager sent to all of us today. I'm really excited about all the things that are being done, have been done, are going to be done, from the parks and recreation reservations to permitting. I, I did see that in terms of the website, there was going to be a working group with staff, and I just wondered if there's a way to give input to them or have them talk to Assemblymembers, because I'm specifically thinking about two things. A lot of people seem to come here totally frustrated, and they didn't know they could reach out to somebody at the borough to try to get a question answered first. Like, they, they just come to the meeting and, and it's clear they haven't known who to talk to. So like on the borough website, in addition to like how I can get a permit, you could have, you know, how, how do, who do I ask if I have a problem with what the borough's doing? And then I think as Assemblymembers, we see a specific, we, a lot of times are, are trying to help the public navigate the system, so I think getting input from Assemblymembers might be helpful in things we see. So if there's, I don't know, whatever the appropriate way would be for us to communicate any suggestions or have them come talk with us a little bit, or however you think would be the best, most efficient way to do that, let us know.
Parting comments, sir?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would say for that, it would be easier if you would reach out to me and say, I'm interested in connecting, and I'll say, I'll make that connection happen. Is that reasonable? With regard to that, the, the second piece would be, I'm asking for your help here. Some of the questions that came up tonight are questions that did not need to wait until 6:00 PM. So if you help us, I don't think it's wise to put 25 or 30 staff members in the back of the room to try to anticipate every question that you might ask for every piece of legislation that's on the agenda. So if you can help us with that, we'll bring you better information to inform your decision-making. I mean, I don't think it's probably reasonable to expect the Public Works Director to have the ins and outs of a maintenance schedule for a generator. I just, I, I got bigger fish that he needs to be frying than that. But it would be helpful, because I, if that's important and you want to know that, I want to get you that answer. So if you can, if you anticipate that, let me know in advance. Let Tom know, or if it's Russ or whoever that director is, I'm comfortable with that. I just would rather know in advance, because then we can get to the right person that has that information, because I don't want to be doing guesswork here, and frankly, it'll help your meetings go a little bit faster. So I would just ask for your help there. I would love to be able to do that, because it is important to us to get you good information. And it's no fun, frankly, to stand down there and kind of be on the spot and not know the answer to a question. I mean, I'm speaking from my experience. Tom likes it, but he's, he's a little bit, you know, odd. So with that said, thank you. That's all.
We'll go back to the one question each one of the Assembly that asked. Assemblyperson Sumner, parting comments, sir?
I have no comments.
Okay, Madam Clerk, I'm sorry, I'm in. Okay. Assemblyperson Gamble, parting comment?
Thank you. And Assemblymember Bernier, I wish you all the luck. I know Meadow Lakes has a lot of colorful positionallys over there, because I've dealt with a lot of them myself, so I, I really do, I hope, I hope it all works out.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Assemblyperson Fono, parting comment?
Um, I, I'll touch on something that was on the last general meeting. I thought Ms. Lani will touch on this. It was in regards to referral that we had. So after the last meeting, I stopped by the clerk's office and asked, you know, what the rules were to, in order to have the board for the, the, the pay to meet, they have not met this year. And if, basically, what I understood is they could meet anytime this year, but the clerk was under impression that we should not ask them to meet till next year. So I wanted to have a little bit clearer direction, and maybe Lani can kind of explain what the misunderstanding might have been was. So I wanted to ask if, if you guys are okay with it, is to have clerk's office, not in like an immediate, but in the next maybe several months, to start that process so that the board can meet, come back with a recommendation, and then, so it doesn't actually sit for exactly 300-some days, but we could have the report from that board earlier.
Go ahead.
To the Assembly and Assemblymember Fono, the way I took that motion to refer it for 365 days was that they would be on the regular schedule, and they would start meeting next January to provide that information to the Assembly within that 365-day timeframe. I didn't plan to schedule anything before January.
I guess my request is to ask Assembly's board, because there is a recommendation that was previously rejected. It's still on the table. I have the copy of that. It's been a few years since then. I think it's reasonable for them to ask to revisit. The only reason they didn't retouch it, because based on the report, they said there was a recommendation and Assembly did not take action on it. So it's a, I think it's reasonable to ask what the, for them to give us a fresh, and it shouldn't, based on my understanding, shouldn't take them just only one meeting to come up with a recommendation, and then we'll pretty much be able to make a decision on that. So I think it's a, a reasonable request, and I would like the Assembly to also support me on that.
Yes, Assemblyperson Nowers.
Just kind of a, a point of order for the clerk. We, we kind of had legislation on this that we took action on, so now we're being asked to reconsider or reverse legislation. I feel like I'm in a weird spot that I shouldn't be in, and the public shouldn't be in.
No, the, we're not asking anything outside of normal. It's not changing legislation. The timeframe is there. It does not mean that they have not met. We're not, this would not be in any kind of law change or anything, or not voting. It's just a matter of us instructing a clerk, which director, do we wait till actual next year, or if possible, to ask them to come up with a recommendation before then? So that's, that's, that was my understanding, how this can be approached, and when I talked to Lani, she said she'll bring it up in front of Assembly, she didn't. And that's why, that's why I brought it up, because based on the phone call, she says that's not the direction I understood from the Assembly, but that's, I, I see that, that path is there. So I guess it's up for interpretation. That's all I'm saying.
Madam Mayor, my question was to the clerk. This is a weird position that I feel like we had legislative debate about this and decided to wait a year, and we're not in a formal reconsideration process, so I'm not inclined to take this up, but.
Assemblyperson McKee?
Yeah, I, I'm kind of in agreement with Mr. Fono, because I, when I left here, I thought, okay, so we're going to ask these folks, hey, could you have a, one meeting this year and talk about this? That's where I was. That was the impression I was left with. So I think there's some confusion, and that whole referral process thing, I had absolutely no clue what that was about, and when I, when I found out that, okay, you just killed it, not you, we, that "we" just killed it, that's not what I was hoping for. Because, because the last time it came up when we actually did vote as a body, basically we just, like I was talking before, we said bifurcation. I'm thinking, okay, that's fine, and then bifurcation never happened. I mean, it never, it never went anywhere. So I just, I don't know. If, they thought that, that it should, the accelerators and the monuments commission thought that it should, that we should get a little more. I mean, that was fine with me, just a brand-new person here, but we said no. We, I said no because I thought it was going to be taken up again, and it never was. Yeah, whatever that's worth.
Do you want to say something? No?
I have Assemblymember.
Oh, Assemblyperson Hale.
So is there a motion on the floor?
We're in, we're in parting, parting comments, and people, we're in parting comments, and they were rotating more than once. You guys are going to hear that a lot.
I do want to, if I could, Madam- I do wanna, if I could, Madam Mayor.
Yeah, move your chair.
If I could.
Go ahead.
So, at the, at the last Assembly meeting, the, the Salaries and Amoluments Commission is scheduled to meet early next year. The motion was to refer it until next year. So, that didn't, my, in my direction from the Assembly I took that night, is they're not meeting until next year to give you guys advi- to give the Assembly advice?
But didn't you say that you could, we could approach them and see if they wanted to do this? Did I make that up in my mind or? 'Cause that's, when we left here, I kinda thought that that's what, where, where we were going with that. And then they said.
Point of order.
Pretty much, but if.
I mean, this is parting comments. We're not opening things up again.
Yeah, right, to be continued.
Deputy Mayor?
Here, Mike.
I do have a question for Tom. The, uh, Road Service Area Operating Manual, is there a chance that we can all get up, up, an updated one?
Yeah. Uh, the manager can answer the question.
Okay, thanks.
Right? Say yes and go home.
I'll send it through the manager so he can distribute it tomorrow.
Okay. Alrighty. Also, I think everybody, you still have your light on, sir? Okay. Um, I did wanna ask the Assembly, um, how they felt about writing that letter for Tom Robinson regarding being able to ask the contractor to make enough room there for the fire trucks to be off? Yeah, Assemblyperson Hale.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I would support that. I passed a note to the manager earlier saying, you know, "Please, would you write a resolution in support of this?" I think, looking at that picture, you can see that that, uh, that that fire hydrant is, is in a terrible position, bottom of a ditch with a separated pathway next to it. Um, I think, I think they could do a better job with that fire hydrant.
Okay, Assemblyperson Nowers?
I would just wanna get maybe, um, some input from, uh, Director Barclay, uh, if there's any issue there and find out if the, uh, contact the project manager, John Wisenin of the Collin Highway Project, to find out if there's already.
That's who, that's who he met with. That's who Tom just met with, saying he needs a letter.
Um, okay, well, I would just like to get input from Director Barclay on it since it's, that would be his concern and if, if we've got an issue with safety there or not.
Okay. Um, and, um, now that, uh, 25017 has passed, um, and I won't put the clerk and the attorney on the spot, but I think we need to meet tomorrow, uh, regarding the applicants that we had for Road Service Area 27 that probably got a letter from us when we did the appointment two weeks ago, 'cause that filled the board of three and they probably would've gotten a letter from Jamie saying that somebody else has been approved. So, I don't know if we can go back to them or if we have to have new applicants. That'll be my question, so you guys can think about it tonight and tell me then which way we proceed. Does everybody understand?
Do you want the answer now or do you wanna?
Oh, sure, if you got the answer now, that's.
Mayor, these are your appointments. You can appoint them if they're still willing to serve.
Okay, all right.
You can ask them, you can reach out and ask them if you want. There is no code saying you are prohibited from now considering them because you made the appointment before it became a five-member board.
Okay.
These are mayoral appointments and the mayoral appointment power under state law is very strong.
Okay, all right.
It's up to you.
Alrighty. So, uh, any last parting 17th motions? We will adjourn at 9:20, what is that, 27?
You will now be disconnected.